To order at 6:07 PM. This is a regular meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale. Good evening, everyone, and thank you for being here. I do need to ask anyone standing in the hallway, there are chairs, plenty of chairs up front. I do need you to come on in and have a seat, please, before we can begin. Plenty of seats. At this time, I would ask everyone to please rise to salute our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, an interior republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mayor Don Levy.
Here.
Councilmember Sandimar.
President.
Costa.
Here.
De La Ripa.
Here.
Demato.
Here.
Hudson. President Gadsden.
Also with us this evening is our municipal clerk, Jane McCarthy, and our borough attorney, Fred Semrau. This is an official meeting of the governing body of the borough of Bloomingdale. On November 28th, and amended on February 18th of 2016, the date time and place of this official meeting was faxed and mailed to all local news media and posted here at Borough Hall. The first order of business is a presentation by the Otto Group and Richard Redding Associates. Just to recap, we are going on approximately, into our late fourth year, discussing the Tilcon-Meer concept. And the borough, in July, had authorized two studies to be performed. The first was by the Otto Group, which was the Market Study and Valuation Report, expansion of Bloomingdale Quarry. And the second was by Redding Associates, by Mr. Richard Redding, which was a fiscal impact analysis of the Meere Tract redevelopment. What we're going to do, we are going to have each of the gentlemen present their reports in summary fashion. They are quite detailed. I did release the reports to the public over a week ago, so I think many people in the room have had time to read them. Each gentleman will present their reports. The governing body and the public will have the opportunity to ask questions specific to the reports. I don't want to get into the clock and timeframes on speaking, but, you know, we want to move it along and, you know, not go on too long. Any one individual, but we obviously will listen to everything you have to say. So with that said, again, I welcome everybody. Jeff Otto and Richard Redding, I welcome you here this evening as well. I would ask each of you to introduce yourselves and tell us a little bit about yourselves and your credentials. Jeff, welcome, and we'll begin with you.
Thank you for that welcome, Mayor, and good evening, Council. My name is Jeffrey Otto. I am president of the Otto Group. And our business is real estate analysis and valuation. The work that I do is a license activity here in New Jersey, and I hold the highest level of license that's offered for this type of work here in the state, which qualifies me as an expert in all types of property, industrial, commercial, residential, and land. My work focuses on understanding the viability of particular development uses, the value of real estate that is being considered for development, and in understanding the ramifications of that on local communities as a result of development. I've been qualified as an expert at all levels of the courts, both federally and here in New Jersey, Superior Court, Federal Bankruptcy Court, State Tax Court, and I have appeared before hundreds of municipalities and been qualified as an expert in the subject matter that I'm here to talk to you about this evening.
Okay, thank you very much, Jeff. Mr. Redding.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. My name is Richard Redding. I'm an economic analyst and consultant, and have been so engaged for over 35 years. I'm a graduate of the Pennsylvania State University. I'm also a principal in Richard B. Redding Associates, a Princeton-based consulting firm. It provides economic, demographic, and financial research to approximately 550 clients in both the public and private sectors. One of the specialties of the firm involves the economics of land use, and as a principal of the firm, I appear on a regular basis before planning boards, zoning boards, governing bodies, Superior Court throughout New Jersey and in the eastern portion of the United States. And over the years, I have prepared reports and appeared in over 600 matters involving the economics of land use.
Thank you very much, Mr. Redding. Okay. We will begin, Mr. Otto, with your presentation and discussion on your market study and valuation report. So the floor is yours, and then we'll go to Mr. Redding's report, and then Q and A after that. Sure?
Because there is a detailed report that I have provided to the Council, I will, I intend to only highlight my methodology and findings, but I'm certainly able to go into any specific detail that you'd like me to go deeper on. My work in preparing this report focused on answering three questions. First, to provide an opinion as to whether an expansion of the quarry, and as a result, the increase in the areas within which the quarry operation is occurring, would have any adverse or detrimental effect on the property values of residential homes which are proximate to it. The second question that I looked at was to determine whether a development of this site with multifamily housing would be a beneficial use which would fill a need in the community. And thirdly, I was asked to prepare an indication as to the value of this property under two separate scenarios. The first scenario being if the quarry expansion were approved, and also if the site excavation and preparation work necessary for residential development to go forward was completed. So that was a two-part condition. If the expansion of the quarry were approved, and if the 32-acre portion of the Meere Tract, which is being considered for multifamily development, were excavated, and the site preparation work was completed. The second valuation I was asked to prepare was to assume that the quarry expansion was not approved, and that the necessary preparation and excavation work would not be completed, and under those conditions, to consider what the value of this property is. Beginning with the first task, which was to understand the effect of active quarry operations on surrounding property values, I prepared an extensive study which began by identifying other quarry sites within a radius of the subject property of the Meere Tract. That radius was 20 miles. After identifying where these active quarries exist, we next searched by block and lot to look for homes which sold that were adjacent to one of these quarries. After we identified those home sales which bordered an active quarry operation, the next step in my analysis was to look for like-kind sales of similar homes in the same communities where those quarries existed, which were very similar to the homes which sold bordering the quarry. This is what we refer to as a paired sales technique. And so it was a two-step process. First, to identify homes which sold bordering the quarries. And secondly, to identify very similar homes which sold in those same towns, having the same characteristics as the home that sold which bordered the quarry, which sold very near in time to when the home bordering the quarry sold, so as to be able to measure any difference in value between the two like-kind homes that sold, one bordering a quarry and another one being distant from the quarry. In going through that analysis, we were able to identify a series of what we call pair sales groupings. They are discussed in detail in my report. And there appears, there appears in my report a total of six of these pairings of homes with similar characteristics which sold both near to or far from a quarry. And in analyzing the selling prices of these homes, I found that there was no evidence whatsoever as to the home bordering the quarry suffering any diminution in its selling price. In fact, in some cases, I actually found that similar homes bordering a quarry actually sold for slightly more than homes which did not border a quarry. This is not an unusual finding. And we find this type of effect for other types of real estate circumstances as well. In some cases, the difference in value can be attributable to the subjective aspects of home buying. It's a personal, it's an emotional choice. And sometimes, one home will sell for more or less than another, not necessarily because there's an objective factual reason for that difference, but everyone perceives value to be differently. In other cases, we did find that these home sales that bordered a quarry did have as one of their benefits, the fact that there was not a neighboring home behind them, and so there is an element of privacy.
Excuse me, excuse me. Excuse me, everyone. You'll have an opportunity to address consultants with any questions you have. So, nothing to pina-gally at this time, please. Thank you.
So based upon that analysis, it is my conclusion, and it is my statement to you here tonight, that proximity to an active quarry does not cause any reduction in the value of single-family homes. Moving on from that, the next step in my analysis was to determine whether the development of this 32-acre portion of the Meere Tract would fill a need in the local community, and in doing so, whether it would have a beneficial effect on the community. My work in this area focused on understanding the supply and demand components for housing here in the local area, and in doing so, I found that there is a significant undersupply of multifamily housing. The percentage of multifamily housing here in town falls far short of the target audience for who would choose to live in multifamily housing, in terms of looking at childless households and one- and two-person households, and both younger and older age households. I found there to be a significant undersupply here in the local community of that housing product. I also found that Bloomingdale is experiencing a significant loss in younger age people who are leaving the town. These younger age people are what we normally refer to as the millennial generation, young people in their 20s and 30s, which are the most critical part of an economy today. The millennial generation accounts for a majority of the workforce today. They account for a majority of new household formation and new housing demand, and they are soon to account for the largest share of retail spending and home buying. Here in Bloomingdale, your town here is experiencing double-digit declines in your population of young people, and it's my conclusion that one of the key reasons for that is that there is a short shortage of the housing that they choose to live in. This young generation of millennials today overwhelmingly prefers to live in multifamily forms of housing, which I found to be in short supply here. That young people are leaving at this rather staggering rate, approaching 20% over a 10-year period, implies long-term weakness in your real estate markets, in your local economy, in demand for housing, in occupancy, in commercial types of properties. This is a very concerning trend. I also investigated other multifamily housing developments which have occurred here locally to understand how they have performed. In particular, I looked at the Grand at Riverdale, and I also investigated the Avalon Bloomingdale property. In both cases, I found that these housing projects were absorbed at a reasonable pace, meaning they were able to find home buyers, in the case of the Grand, and tenants, in the case of Avalon's property, at a healthy pace. They achieved full sellout and rent-out, which is an indication that there is this underlying demand for this housing product. In looking at local income levels of households who would be candidates to live in multifamily housing, I found that those local households also have sufficient income to be able to afford to live in any multifamily housing that would potentially be constructed on the 32-acre portion of the Meere Tract if that development were to go forward. And so based upon those elements of my report, it's my conclusion that the development of the site with multifamily housing is a viable use of the property, and would have beneficial effects on the local community in terms of providing a form of housing that's sorely lacking, in terms of providing a place for younger age households to live. And on the subject of younger age households, I can tell you that one of the top priorities of employers today in deciding where to locate is whether or not there is a adequate supply of relevant multifamily housing nearby to where they would locate. Because companies today are focused on hiring young people, and if you don't have the housing, then businesses will choose to locate elsewhere. So based upon all these factors, it's my conclusion that the development of this site with multifamily housing would be beneficial to the community. The last part of my work was to prepare a valuation to quantify the value of this property under the two different scenarios that I explained to you at the beginning. The first scenario would be if the quarry expansion were approved, and if the preparatory, excuse me, site excavation and preparation work were completed, what would the value of this property be to a developer who would be interested in acquiring the tract for the purpose of constructing multifamily housing? Based upon that investigation and analysis, it's my conclusion that if the property were to be developed with 360 multifamily housing units, and assuming that there would be a set aside of 20% for affordable housing, that the remaining 288 market-rate multifamily dwelling units would have a value to a developer for the land of approximately $11 million. It was $10,656,000. And that number was based upon the prices that developers are paying for land, which has also been approved for multifamily development. Now, in quantifying that valuation, I only ascribed value to the market rate component of the project, because generally, in terms of land value, affordable housing units have no land value. That's because the price controls that are placed on what condominiums could be sold for, or luxury apartments could be rented for, are beneath what would be market rates, and as a result, they're not as profitable for developers to construct. Essentially, the cost of building the buildings usually comes up short of covering the revenues that will come from the sale or rental of the units. And for that reason, the land itself, which is what we're considering here this evening, the value that a developer would pay for the land would be limited only to the market rate units that would be constructed. Based upon those 288 market rate units, working off of the 360 number that was previously approved, that would calculate to about $10.5 million, $10,656,000 in land value. That would be the price that I would estimate that a developer would be willing to pay for the land for this development opportunity, presuming that the site preparation and excavation work had been completed. Now, I do want to place a caveat on that number, and the caveat is in my report, but it's just worth mentioning. It's not possible to know at this point if an actual development of the site would propose to construct all of the 360 dwelling units that were previously approved here. We know, for example, that the site that Avalon developed across the street was, in fact, smaller in size than that. And so this value that I provided you is working off of the placeholder of 360 dwelling units, with 288 of those being market rate. If that math, if that formula were to be changed downstream, and there's no way to know if that will happen or not, because it will all be determined based upon market conditions at that point in time, then there is the possibility that this number could be modified. The second scenario for valuing the property that I looked at was to consider what the value of this property would be, actually what it is today, considering that the quarry expansion has not been approved, and considering that as a result of that, the excavation work that would need to be done to reduce the topography of the site to the point that it's buildable has not occurred. What's the value of this property if none of that ever changes? In looking at estimates of cost to develop this site, in terms of this excavation work and the other site work that would be required, an analysis that was provided to me by an engineering firm estimated a cost of about $55 million all in, I'm sorry, approximately $16 million all in, to be able to complete all of this excavation work. And the largest part of that, more than half of it, is to do the excavation and the grading of the site in order to reduce the topography to the point that it would be buildable. I would also mention to you that in addition to the engineering estimates that I looked at, I had the benefit of seeing five other site engineering reports that have been done on this property in recent years for a variety of purposes, and they all came in at about the same cost in order to be able to prepare the site for development. This cost of nearly $16 million is extraordinary. It goes far beyond what would be typical in developing housing, and in fact, it is so extraordinary that it makes the development of the site to be impractical. It would not be feasible without the excavation work being done in advance. In other words, the cost to develop this site is so significant that its cost exceeds the value of the land after the site work has been completed, and therefore, in its present site, it's not feasible or viable for this site to be developed. It would cost a developer too much. A developer wouldn't be willing to pay you anything for this site if the excavation work, if the lowering of the topography was not completed as a precondition. Simply put, it would generate costs of development which would exceed the revenues that the project would be able to develop. And so it's my conclusion that absent the grading and excavation work on the site, development of multifamily housing is not viable. At that point, this site, at that point, what this site becomes is a candidate to be preserved as open space. And my analysis of that scenario indicated a value for this property under those conditions of significantly less, of about $1.8 million. Now, just to round this out and take this full circle, I would point out to you, as I believe you're aware, that the tax assessor here in Bloomingdale has currently placed taxable value on this property, what's called a tax assessment, of nearly, of more than $11 million. Based upon what's called the assessed-to-true-value ratio for Bloomingdale, which is a ratio that's struck by the New Jersey Division of Taxation and calculates the average difference between assessed value and selling prices in a town each year, based upon that ratio, the assessor's valuation of the Meere Tract at $11.1 million equates to an implied market value of $12 million. But my work has indicated that the property, absent being prepared for development, isn't worth $12 million. It's only worth $1.8 million. And so what that means is that there's a likelihood that absent quarry expansion and site preparation work to facilitate future development, that the taxes on this property would be lowered dramatically. Based upon the numbers I've shared with you, I'll use round numbers, the $450,000 in property taxes that are currently being paid would be reduced by about $385,000, overwhelmingly reduced. But in fact, the likelihood is that it would go one step further, because if this site were not to be developable, what likely happens is that the property owners would look to place this land into a land conservancy, to preserve the land forever so that it would never be developed, to sell those rights, those development rights in the process, perhaps to a land conservation group, or the DEP, or some other entity. And in the process, this property would then be completely removed from your tax rolls. It would pay nothing in taxes going forward compared to approximately $450,000 a year that it's paying now. So that concludes a summary of my report, and I'm here for any questions that you may have.
What I'd like to do is, because a lot of Rich's calculations on values and taxes and things sort of tie together, so I'd like Mr. Redding to report and then ask any questions, if that's okay with the Council, for Council questions, okay, and in the public as well. Mr. Otto, thank you very much for that. And again, we'll come back with questions in the public too, so all of that will be expounded on. Mr. Redding, the floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. I too have prepared a report, and since it is available, I will just give the highlights of the analysis. My assignment was to undertake and provide an evaluation of the economic, the demographic, and fiscal implications that could be expected to result from the redevelopment of this property, this 180 acres known as the Meere Tract, for an expansion of the adjacent quarry operations and the creation of a 32- to 35-acre site that could accommodate 360 multifamily housing units, including 72 affordable housing units. We've utilized an input-output model that's been developed by the Center for Urban Policy Research at Rutgers. It's used very consistently in fiscal evaluations, and begins with an examination of the economic base and fiscal structure of the community of Bloomingdale. And in that respect, we collected the information from the borough clerk, the tax assessor, and the Board of Education, along with a review of the current historical data. and the Board of Education along with a review of the current historical data reflected in the ratable base, the assessment ratios, the budgets, and the tax structure. The current redevelopment plan, or the redevelopment plan that I examined, contemplates an expansion of the existing adjacent quarrying operations plus the construction of 360 multifamily rental housing units. There is at this moment no specific plan. It's been my assumption that where they built today, that they would likely be rental housing units and would be distributed between 288 market-priced housing units and 72 affordable housing units. The market housing units would be comprised of 173 one-bedroom units and 115 two-bedroom units with monthly rents in the range of $1,785 to $2,100. The 72 affordable housing units would be offered with the required mixture of one, two, and three-bedroom units and have monthly rents calculated to be affordable to lower-income families. And with those rents, the value, the capitalized value of the project, which I discussed with the borough's tax assessor, would be about $48.6 million with an estimated assessment of $45 million. The completed mixed-use development would be estimated to have 10 employees, and those the employees' estimate provided to me by TILCON for the expansion onto a portion of the property, plus 725 anticipated residents, and would have allocated municipal service costs of about $198,000. Added municipal tax revenues from the new development would amount to $488,000, indicate a surplus for municipal purposes of about $289,000. In addition to the municipal impacts, the new development would also generate some public schoolchildren. And for that purpose, we use the demographic multipliers that are published by the Center for Urban Policy Research. And separate multipliers exist for market units, market one- and two-bedroom rental units, and for the affordable housing units. And in this regard, the 288 market housing units would be estimated to generate 22 public schoolchildren, while the 72 affordable units would generate 48 schoolchildren, for a total of 70 schoolchildren. And those schoolchildren enrolled in the public schools would have an allocated cost of about $457,000, but would be offset by school tax revenues of $967,000, yielding an annual revenue surplus for the school district of about $509,000. The market components of the proposed redevelopment, which is the expanded quarry and the 288 market units, generate tax revenues, total tax revenues, municipal, school, and county, about $1.6 million and have allocated costs of about $452,000, yielding a revenue surplus of $1.2 million. The affordable component, on the other hand, generates revenues of about $168,000 and costs of $445,000 with a deficit of about $276. As inclusionary developments are supposed to work, the surplus generated by the market units fully offsets the deficits of the affordable units, and in this instance, generates an overall revenue surplus of about $927,000. In addition to the annual fiscal effects, we also looked at the private sector economic impacts that might be expected. And during the construction phase, we would anticipate about 408 construction-related jobs with $8.7 million in payrolls. And when completed, it would be a location of 10 jobs and 360 households, and those activities would be expected to result in about $21.5 million in annual personal expenditures. Additionally, there are certain one-time costs that would be generated. And as Mr. Otto had indicated, the leveling, grading, and stabilization of the site, donation to the borough, and its ultimate sale would yield about $10.6 million in revenues. The new development would pay about $972,000 in water connection fees, about $2.6 million in sewer connection fees, and based on the Avalon project, this new development would pay about $800,000 in building permits and inspection fees. So, overall, these one-time or non-recurring revenues amount to about $15 million. You've heard about the alternate use. The alternate use is it stays as it is, but it really wouldn't stay as it is because the assessment on this property, if it turns out that it could not be developed for the expansion of the quarry, and without the expansion of the quarry, the residential development would not proceed, the value of the property would be severely diminished because of its inutility. Another factor to be considered, and it goes back to a decision and order from the Superior Court of New Jersey that the borough has an obligation to provide the 72 affordable housing units. If this development does not go forward, and if the 360 housing units were not built, the obligation would not, in my opinion, disappear. The borough would still have that obligation for 72 affordable housing units. And if the borough couldn't find a suitable inclusionary site, it may have to consider a municipally-sponsored development just for the 72 affordable housing units. According to the rules promulgated by the Council on Affordable Housing, the subsidy cost for an affordable housing unit in this region, which is Bergen, Hudson, and Passaic County, is about $180,000 per unit. I've used a more conservative measure of $100,000 a unit, but that would still yield, if the borough undertook this, an annual debt service of about $400,000. Additionally, without the market units being added to offset the deficits we discussed for the affordable units, and even if this were a taxable project, there'd be about $244,000 in deficits for the municipality and the school district for this municipally-sponsored affordable project. So, part of the benefit of this project is that it does help the borough meet its affordable housing obligation. It does it in a fashion that the market units not only fund the cost of constructing the affordable units, but also fund the operation of those units with no additional cost to the residents or taxpayers in Bloomingdale. So, there are, in addition to the standard fiscal considerations, the affordable housing issues attached to this project, and as well as the non-recurring revenues that would be unique to the conveyance of the site to the borough. I think that's essentially the substance of my report.
And again, both reports are much more detailed. Those are the basic summary points. And before we open to the council for questions, I just want to make a statement, and then I'll lead with my first question. For those here who may not, I don't know how closely you followed the history of the Meere tract, tonight we're talking about the concept of expanding the quarry. We're not talking about the 360 units because those are already court ordered. Okay, so I just heard some grumbling in the audience, like, we're not talking about the housing component. That exists already, okay? That was ordered by the court in 2008. So, the issue we're talking about is on the Meere tract, it's 180 acres, 32 of which have a court order for affordable housing, 360 units, 72 affordable, 288 market. That's been in place since 2008. So, in summation on Mr. Otto's report, pretty much that in its current state, based on the cost of earthwork, that it would be unlikely that 32 acres would ever be developed because of the cost to do so. A builder's not going to come in, buy it for X, spend $16 million, and therefore, that site most likely would never be built. If the TILCON expansion was to be considered, and part of that concept was TILCON doing that site work, then there's an opportunity a developer might be willing to pay roughly $10 to $11 million for it because now the site work expense is gone, and the affordable housing could then be achieved. That's pretty much, in a nutshell, what we're here to talk about. And then, there's the pros and cons of all that. There's the pros and cons of increased revenue, decreased loss of revenue, and all these variables. So, the governing body has to consider all of that. So, I know we're going to hear a lot tonight in opposition, and I want to hear that, but the council just has to look at the big picture, the pros and cons of losing revenue, gaining revenue, and which is the best for the borough. I do want to lead with the question on the housing. When you mentioned your pair sales analysis, we heard a lot of chuckling in the audience, like, how can that be? How can a quarry not affect the value of a house? So, I just want to state, and again, anyone later can ask their own question, but your conclusion is based on actual sales. So, I mean, it's not something we're just making up. There are houses that sold, and that's what the data had shown. And again, we heard chuckling from the audience that, how can that be? I know there's been, my counsel and Costa had done research on actual case law in the state of New Jersey where appeals have gone on near quarries and judges have just awarded 15%, 20%, 25% reduction in values on houses. So, I ask you, Jeff, that said, your paired sales is a process. There's a case where judges have done otherwise. How can you address that inconsistency? And it's not an inconsistency, how can you address that difference for me?
Sure. I'm only aware of one other circumstance in which a judge arbitrarily assigned a loss in value discount for this type of situation. And in looking at the details of that case, what I found was that in the dispute between parties, no one, neither of the sides, had put forward any factual arguments or evidence as to whether the presence of a quarry had any effect or not. And in the case that I did review, a judge made a judicial decision that in the absence of facts, that a discount of approximately 20%, as I recall, would be applied. What I'm talking to you about here tonight, what I'm discussing with you, is something very different. In this case, there is a factual analysis that looks at homes which have sold that are immediately adjacent to a quarry and compares them to like-kind houses which sold at about the same time, that had similar features, and compared the prices between the two. And so, I'm not sharing with you tonight a subjective opinion. I'm sharing with you what the data and the analysis tells us about this condition.
Okay. I know I'll have more questions as we hear from the council and the public, but Mr. Redding, during this process, the borough's concern was achieving affordable housing. We have this court order. Avalon Bay was the first affordable housing built in the borough's history, other than group homes and a little bit from the nursing home. Over the years, parcels that were deemed affordable housing sites were, in some cases, approved for development and then acquired for open space. This particular one was a 30-year haul in front of the planning board, and ultimately 2008, the court order. So, from the borough's perspective, it's all about achieving that affordable housing. And in your report, you say, if the borough's choice was do nothing, don't consider the quarry, concept, expansion, that odds are, there's going to be no builder, the Meere owners, I would imagine, up in years would look to sell that property and possibly as open space. So, the concern is that 72 units. Now, in discussion with environmental commission members and public in past meetings, there's a difference of opinion on that, where, and I've asked Fred, and there's some case law on it too, where the borough doesn't have to worry about it being built. We just have to put it somewhere and have a reasonable opportunity that it will be built. So, that said, if it's never built because of these value issues and the cost of the actual earthwork, your report says otherwise, that they don't go away. We'll have to find another parcel. We'll have to possibly do a self-funded development for just the COA, possibly go to the judge in this whole COA, because COA's kind of in flux now, and try to get a reduction, which would be difficult because our numbers have gone from 400. We're happy that they're down to 260 range on the most recent determinations, including those 72 units. So, I can't imagine them being reduced any more than they have based on our open space, based on our Highlands Preservation Area and all that. So, we have that opinion, which I'm sure you'll hear from a few members of the public, is, no, that's not true. We just have to provide a reasonable opportunity. And you're saying we'd have to find a home for them. So, I'd ask you to speak to that imbalance there.
There is an obligation that the borough is going to have to address. I read the court order, and I read the borough's housing element and fair share plan. This is a designated site. If it turns out that this site does not provide a realistic development opportunity, that it cannot be developed for the reasons that have been discussed, it's my opinion that an alternative site will need to be located in order for you to meet that obligation. And if one can be found within the borough and other inclusionary site, then fine. The borough doesn't have any obligation. If though, as may be the case, there are limited land resources to accommodate a development like this that is a fully serviced site with water and sewer, an alternative would be a smaller site to accommodate just the affordable units. And that site would not be likely to be built by an independent developer because of the subsidy required. It may require some municipal activity.
Okay. Do you think council members have anything specific at this time?
Well, just to that point, I was at a planning board meeting, and our last planning board meeting, affordable housing was one of the subjects that we were discussing, and we hired someone to help us, you know, take the numbers from the 400 the mayor mentioned down to the 260, and he's going to help us. And he mentioned your name, Richard Redding, and, you know, aha, I know that name, and he's coming in front of us. And I did some background check, did some Google of your name, and I saw a few articles where you're actually giving advice to these judges that are making the ruling across the state. Can you just touch on that and what's been happening over the last few months with your firm?
Well, I'm not here in that capacity, but it is true. I've been appointed by nine Superior Court judges in New Jersey to assist them in developing a methodology for affordable housing plan to evaluate the initial plan prepared by Fair Share Housing Corporation, as well as the plans prepared by E-Consult Solutions retained by many municipalities. So, I am, in fact, involved in that process in a number of areas, not Passaic County at this time.
I just wanted to touch on that because you kind of mentioned it as, in my opinion, and it seems like you are the source that the judges are going to for that opinion.
This is not one of the counties that I'm working in, and therefore, I don't want to preempt anyone.
I understand, I understand. I appreciate.
I'm not sure what the obligations may be, but from what I read in the order, the court order, that this obligation was part of the second round, the second round obligation. No matter what is happening in the third round, what the Supreme Court has said very clearly is that those prior round obligations must be met. They don't go away. So, sometime, that's going to have to be addressed. You did do, your planner did do a housing element, fair share plan. This was a site designated to help the borough meet compliance, and if that site goes away, I think it might be a little fanciful to think that this obligation's going to go away, that you're going to be sometime called upon to find a replacement for those units.
Thank you.
I have two questions for Mr. Redding. You noted your school costs at $457,620, correct? You noted your school costs at 457, 620, correct?
Yes.
You based that on how many students?
That is based on 70.
70 students. Were any of those students special needs students? Do you take that into consideration?
Only proportionally, that we think that special ed students would have the same proportion here as they do in the town. And if you take the entire school budget and you take the average per student cost, that average student's cost is actually skewed upward by the fact that you do have some special needs students. So it is included on a proportional basis.
Understood. Also, you have expenses by the borough, I believe, of $198,000 and change.
Yes.
What are those expenses?
The expenses were, this project is, well, the residential portion of this project would be a Class 4C property. And Class 4C means commercial, and apartments are a commercial property. So Class 4C properties are not entitled to the same level of services that Class 2, which is single family and all other types of residential. They are not entitled to garbage, they're not entitled to snow plowing and other features. So the costs associated with a Class 4 property are much less than an average residential property. Additionally, speaking with the borough, with the police department and with Public Works, they indicated that they felt that the existing facilities and personnel were adequate to pretty much take care of this without an incremental or average cost addition.
So what would be some examples of what that included?
The specific items we took were the ones that the departments indicated that they had no specific cost were eliminated. And they were, the police and fire department indicated they did not need additional personnel or equipment nor administration. But the rest of the budget, Public Works also indicated that they could serve this with existing facilities. Health, welfare, recreation, education, insurance, construction code, library, and other services were included.
Understood. Okay, thank you.
Any other council person?
Worst-case scenario is we lose the property toll, we lose all the taxes, the $450,000 is gone, right? We have to build this affordable housing.
You don't have to build, you have to find a way.
Find a way to do it, okay? But that's additional cost to the borough. Now, the end result is we have to make up that $450,000 in taxes every year going forward if we lose that to where we are today. All right? Now that's a tax item. Does that also lower the value of homes in the community?
I'm hesitating because I would need to take a more careful look at the math to understand what the incremental effect of that $452,000 would be on a typical homeowner. And so I'd need to, I need to look at that to understand what the scale would be. But what I can tell you is that towns which have higher taxes generally have lower property values. When home buyers seek to purchase a home, they are typically working with a budgeted amount that they can afford for their housing expense, which is a factor of their total income. And so if a home buyer, I'm just going to start to throw some numbers around here to give you an idea of this. If a home buyer can afford a monthly budget of $3,000 a month for their housing expense, embedded in that is property taxes and a mortgage payment, as well as other expenses added in. As the taxes go higher, what's left in the budget that can be applied to a mortgage payment is reduced, and that typically translates into a lower value for the real estate in order to be affordable to a buyer in a town that has higher taxes than other places. That's sort of mechanically how that works. I hesitate to say that that would be the case here without actually running the math on how that would affect the typical property owner. But in theory, your premise is correct.
Well, a $450,000 loss of revenue taxes would, right, that would, $200 a household, easy, easy, per year, times forever, yeah. Right, right, that, just to give an idea, but, okay, I'm sorry, down here, Mike?
Yeah, there's a question for Fred, attorney. The court order states 360 affordable houses have to be built, dwellings have to be built in a percentage of that. That, at the end of the day, if we develop the site, 360, no more, no less, will be built on that site. Or could it be less?
If, when you say we, if the borough were to have to develop or sell it to a developer...
Does it have to be 360?
The real key to that is the 72. That's what really has to be built. It's approved up to the 360, but it's, the 360, those market units are supposedly to give a developer the financial benefit to absorb the 72 units. But 72 is the number that's critical.
But...
And the reason I ask is because in your first draft and your expert opinion, it said your current, taking current design standards and all that into effect, you thought the site could only hold 200 ultimately, 200 units and 160. And your number came down to, instead of, you know, $11 million, the value of the land then is 4.8 million.
I'm, just to slightly reshape the way that you presented that. It's not that I, I did not indicate that the site could only handle the lower number of housing units. I was, I wanted to capture the potential for a developer coming along and wanting to build a smaller size project. And, but the site can accommodate 360 housing units. There are engineered plans that show that that can be achieved. But the lower number that you're pointing to was to account for that potential of someone wanting to build a smaller size project. Now, that's not to say that there could potentially be two different developers on the site.
Correct.
Someone who comes along first and is interested in building a smaller size project, followed by a second developer who would want to build out the other part of the project.
But I guess, just in a nutshell, to answer the councilman's question, if a developer was interested in buying the property and they wanted a reduction in units, if the borough was willing to go, to listen to that developer and go back to a Superior Court judge for a reduction, I'm sure the answer is yes. Whether the judge will approve that is a different story. I mean, Avalon Bay, Avalon Bay reduced the number of COA units, but then gave us money in a trust fund. So at the end of the day, we netted out our obligation. So I don't think it's a definitive no, Mike, that the number can't be reduced. It possibly can if a judge was to approve that.
I'm just saying, there's a possibility.
Sure. But I would argue...
And on the...
I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question with that, Mike, though? Because, Mr. Otto, with what Mike was asking and you just said, a developer can come in and subdivide it? I guess then, how does your, or, I don't know who can explain this then, then how does your COA obligation work with that? I'm curious, because that's the first I've heard of that, being able to happen.
Well, I think I'll address the first part of your question, but I'm going to defer on the COA aspects. I'm not sure if that would be Mr. Redding or Mr. Semrau, but certainly the potential exists that a developer interested in acquiring the property would have in mind a smaller size project. That's certainly a possibility. If the site has, if the excavation and stabilization work on the site has been completed, and if the ownership of that development site had been deeded to the municipality, it would be the municipality's decision as to whether or not they wanted a smaller project than was previously approved. And that's probably a complex series of equations that you need to think about, given the affordable housing obligation that's already attached to the site. But certainly the potential for that exists. And that may be something that Bloomingdale would be open to, or it might not be. You might decide to hold out for somebody who wanted to, in fact, build the larger project that you had in mind. As to the affordable housing, Rich, you want to address that?
There are 15 visiting judges, and right now, they're all making their own rules. And I can't speak for what the judge in Passaic County is going to do. But basically, when this project was before the judge many years ago, nine years ago, I believe, the standard set aside was 20%. But the 20% set aside was for purchased housing, whereas rental housing has had a lower set aside of 15%. So you could achieve the 72 units with less than 360, presuming the 15%, because you get a bonus credit. And if you take, like, certain counties, which are going all the way back to the round tool rules, where you get a two-for-one credit, you could probably get your 72 credits with 36 units, which would then be keyed to a smaller project. But again, I, until this county makes those policy decisions, or this judge does, I don't know what it'd be, but there's a possibility. Or if you came with a project that covered most of these, then a contribution or some of the proceeds of the land sale may go into your housing trust fund for further relief.
Mike, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
No, no, good question.
You mentioned in your opening statement too, that the 20 and 30-year-olds were leaving, you're saying, according to your report. And I'm sorry, did you say that that's what you thought was, those are the age group that would be in the multi-dwelling? That's what they're looking for, multi-dwellings?
That would be one of the demand components, one of the cohorts that would likely reside in multifamily housing that would be constructed here. And I took a more open approach, considering that it, certainly based upon recent development patterns, there is a probability that if it were developed today, it would likely be a rental property.
Right.
But circumstances change, time changes, and that may be different in the future. But regardless of whether the multifamily homes would be condominiums or luxury apartments, the demand for these types of properties generally comes from three different groups of buyers or renters. The largest component is what we call the bookend generations, and that would be households which are 35 years and younger, or 60 years of age and older. Focusing on the 35 and under, these for the most part are the millennials. They are tending to rent property rather than own it for a wide variety of reasons, and they account for a significant share of renter demand.
Right.
At the other end of the spectrum, we have empty nesters who've raised families in single-family homes, no longer have a need for that space or that expense, and are interested in downsizing into something smaller while remaining in the local community. So we typically see that the largest share of multifamily housing demand comes from those two groups. In the middle is something that, for rental properties, we refer to as renters by choice. Avalon Bay is a company that excels at attracting this type of resident. Renters by choice are households who have adequate income and savings and liquid funds and credit to be able to afford to buy a home. They just don't want to. What they're looking for is a highly amenitized lifestyle experience with onsite amenities that they can make use of, perhaps typically that's in the form of lounges, billiards rooms, fitness centers onsite. They're willing to pay a whole lot more for that so that when they come home from work, there's not a lawn to cut, there aren't gutters to clean, it's just a simpler lifestyle. This is very popular with single households, it's also popular with dual-working households. These renters by choice tend to fall somewhere in the late 30s to mid 40s in age, and they really seek out these properties if they're an upper, if they're a luxury-type quality with lots of amenities. So I think you could expect to see all of that in what would be built here.
And is that the demographics that we use to get the 70s school kids?
Yes, if you, in our report, the bedroom mix on the market units was 173 one-bedrooms. So it's really, it's geared towards the smaller household and 115 two-bedrooms. So that is really the construct that I use to do the school estimates. The school estimates are standard statewide demographic multipliers. It's my understanding, speaking to borough officials, that Avalon Bay has generated but a handful of schoolchildren out of its product. And newer multifamily projects in northern New Jersey, rental projects, have consistently generated fewer schoolchildren than the standard multipliers that I use. So in all likelihood, I have reached the upper bound. With regard to the affordable units, they are subject to specific pricing and occupancy requirements. They probably are more realistic in terms of what will occur in those units.
Anything else? Okay. Yes?
With regards to your $16 million for the excavation, the estimate of that, did that take into consideration any of the profits that might come from the aggregate removed?
Not at all.
Yeah? Okay.
Any other council person have anything at this time? Yes?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions, I believe, from Mr. Otto. In your market comparison on the housings in terms of those close to or adjacent to a quarry and those not, I believe you mentioned that there were six pairings?
Yes.
I've taken some statistics and probability, and I know most of this is counterintuitive, but to me, that seemed like a rather low number. Is that a significant?
Yes.
Is that a sufficient number to get an appropriate valuation?
Two-part question, answer to your two-part question. First, this is not a broad quantitative analysis where I have simply looked at top-line numbers and run statistical calculations on them. If I had taken that approach, where all that I looked at was what's the selling price of the two pairing groups and how do they differ from each other, then six would not be a large enough sample size. In this particular case, that is not the approach that I've taken. I've not applied broad analytical techniques, but rather I have analyzed each of these properties individually and comparing it to a sister or a twin sale in the same town around the same time, and investigated the qualities of each of these properties individually. So it's a very different technique that I've applied, and six is a reasonable sample size, given the way the analysis is constructed. I would also point out to you that in real estate analysis, we don't have the luxury often of finding large quantities of like-kind data, of suitable data, for such a specialized type of a use. If you think about it, it's almost like looking for a needle in the haystack. We were looking for two homes that sold in the same town, on or about the same date or within reasonable proximity, where one was near to a quarry and one was distant from a quarry, from the quarry. And it's, so it's, the small sample size is a function of the, is a result of the specialized nature of this analysis. In my opinion, it is reliable because it has produced consistent results across the sample size.
Can I add something to that? Because it's a really, it's a good question that you asked, Rich, because it would seem on the surface, you know, that that's, you know, a significant issue. But I have to say, there were two tax court cases that were brought to my attention. I think Councilman Costa brought them to my attention, and as remarked earlier, these matters... matters went all the way to trial, and the experts that were hired didn't have those paired sales analysis, and so the courts just took their best guesstimate. It wasn't the total factor in the case, but there wasn't that paired sale data. And as indicated by Mr. Otto, that's really looking at 12 sales, when you think about it, you know, just to give more information.
Anyone else at this time? Okay. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to take a one-minute, maybe one-and-a-half-minute recess, because Mr. Redding and Mr. Otto are going to come up to the dais. Don't leave your seats, because I'm going to use the restroom, and that's -- we'll resume. Are there seats available in the hallway? If you have a seat in the -- Okay, thank you. We'd like to resume at 7:24. Once again, anyone in the hallway, I'd ask, can find a seat if there's one available.
I guess you and I can share.
Okay, here's what we're going to do. Everyone who wishes to speak will have the opportunity to speak. All speakers will come up, state your name and address for the record. You will address the chair, which is me, and then we'll defer questions to whomever you're asking them to. Again, your questions will be answered. Please address the chair. Please do not turn around and address the audience. Your comments are to the dais, it's very important. What I'd like to do, and again, everyone will have the opportunity to speak, but if I can ask first by a show of hands, how many Bloomingdale residents are here tonight? Okay. What I'd like to do is ask that Bloomingdale residents speak first, and everyone will have the opportunity. So, and again, if you don't want to, then you could wait till after, but I'd ask that our Bloomingdale residents have the first opportunity to speak. So first, I need a motion to open public comment. Excuse me one second, sir.
Go move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I have a -- Mr. Kushner, you got a question?
I mean, I have somewhere up a quarter of 100 members that are Bloomingdale residents, so I'm here on their behalf. I think I should be able to speak for them.
Well, you're going to have that opportunity. I just wanted to state, if Bloomingdale residents wish to speak first, that's -- I'm not -- I can't demand that, I'm just wanting to give them the opportunity first. So the floor is open to speak, so before Mr. Kushner comes up, I'd ask if any Bloomingdale resident would first like to ask questions. You're more than welcome to do so, and if not, you can come at any other time. Okay, seeing no one, anyone wishing -- oh, yes, I have a raised hand. Yes. Just your name and address for the record.
Chairman, Suzanne Osborne, 26 Maple Avenue, Bloomingdale, New Jersey.
Yes.
Hi. I have two questions. The first question I'll address to both Mr. Otto and Mr. Redding, and it's the assertion that without the grading and the site work being done, that the property is undevelopable. Okay? Now, what I don't understand is, it was already determined by the court that it is. D.R. Horton, the developer who brought the builder's remedy suit, needed to meet a three-pronged test in order to get its judgment for builder's remedy. And one of those prongs is that the property is available, suitable, developable, and approvable, and that's New Jersey Administrative Code of 5, Section 93-5.3. And they met that test. So now it's not developable unless there's some site work done?
I'm not able to comment on the court's ruling.
It's not the court's ruling, it's New Jersey law.
But I don't know the particulars of circumstances that existed at that time, I don't know what the --
It's not at the time, it's the builder's remedy lawsuit, it's the --
Can you address this?
-- wrong test for builder's remedy.
I can't comment at all on the circumstances of that having been previously approved and nor -- or how vigorously those tests were investigated. I can't speak to the conditions that exist on the site today.
Yeah, please. I agree with you. I think that those are some of the requirements. What happened in that case, I can't say. I know one thing, it was litigated to the end, and a decision, extensive decision, was rendered. And so from that extent, where, you know, you can't necessarily go back and relitigate, but that was the outcome, and it was based on those standards, so.
Excuse me, please.
My second question, okay, and that -- this goes to the hypothesis that property values will not decline with the expansion of the quarry. And you looked at nine quarry towns in the area, you didn't find any sales in four of those towns, you found only six sales over a period of eight years out of nine towns to support this theory that quarries do not negatively affect property values of adjacent or bordering properties. My question to you is, define adjacent and bordering, because I'll tell you what, it's not the 150 feet away from the quarry that our Van Dam residents are going to be living. None of your comps, none of your sales were anywhere that close to a quarry. And I -- and even, everybody knows Matthews --
Suzanne, please address the chair.
Everybody knows Matthews Avenue in Riverdale, one of the comps that he used, that's not butt-up-to-a-quarry, like Van Dam will be. So define adjacent and bordering.
First, to address the initial part of your question, yes, you are correct. These are the only sales that I have discovered that fit the conditions that I outlined. Now, you should understand, though, that there were more sales than these of properties bordering a quarry, but that was only one part of the test. The second part of the test, that there would also need to have been a twin home, a home just like it, that sold on or about the same point in time that was distant from the quarry.
Okay, but my question is --
Excuse me, I'm not finished answering you yet. I'm going to answer your question fully, so I just wanted to explain to you that the -- that the sample size is attributable to the fact that we're looking for very unique conditions. So if there was a three-bedroom by level that sold in 2013, that was adjacent to a quarry property, what I then needed to find was another three-bedroom home with similar size and similar features that sold in the same year in the same town that was not proximate to the quarry. So it's a -- the filtering that's involved with that is significant. In terms of the distances, which was, I think, the second part of your question, all of these properties that we've identified here are within immediate proximity to the quarry property, but not necessarily to the active quarry operation. To focus on how close they are to the quarry operation, the average distance of these groupings is that the property adjoining the quarry had an average distance of 0.2 miles to where the mining, to where the quarry operation was occurring, so that would translate into about 1,000 feet.
Okay, so that's a lot more than 150. Also, you go --
Excuse me, I'm just not finished yet. I think it's better for you and the public, and better for me, if we sort of, if you ask a question, and then I'll give you a complete answer, and then we'll go on to whatever other questions you have, it's just going to work better. That 0.2 miles, which would equate to about 1,000 feet in terms of the average distance, compares to 1.8 miles for the twin sale, which occurred at some greater distance to the quarry. So we're talking about a magnitude here of about nine to one. Nine times further for the paired sale compared to 2/10 of a mile for the property that was adjacent to the quarry property.
May I?
Yeah.
Okay. How about the Matthews property? How far away was that from the Riverdale quarry?
We measure that as 0.18 miles.
Okay, and one more question.
So that would be right about that 2/10 of a mile distance.
Who paid your fee?
I've been paid by Bloomingdale.
Let's clear the air on that. Suzanne, I'm going to address your comment. We have seen on Facebook, we have seen on, you know, cryptic flyers about town, and here at these meetings, that Tilcon paid the fee for this, these consultants. The Borough retained Richard Redding and the Otto Group to perform these studies. The Borough, since 2012, this is how long we've been discussing this, had established an escrow account, which Tilcon has deposited money into. That is the normal process and the way to do business. Are you telling me that if we're to review such an expansion or a concept, that it should be on our taxpayers' dime? No. It should be funded like any application is.
Just getting it out there.
Well, and I'm getting it out there, the correct statement, that the Borough paid the fee. Now, every application, whether it's for a new home, an addition, a deck, Higgins Paragallo years ago, ball-track applications, whatever's in front of an entity of the Borough, and that the applicant always deposits into escrow to cover the cost of the Borough's professionals and any experts that may be needed. So that is commonplace, and that's what occurred here.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, anyone else, please? Ross, this gentleman was next. I mean, do you -- you mind? I don't think he'll be along there, Ross, you want to just let a -- you go right after this gentleman?
Sure.
Okay, sir, come on up.
I'm ready for factory, I can --
Well, it's not that far. Yes, sir. Name and address for the record, please.
I'm Ross Kushner, I live in Kinneland, I'm here representing the Quantic River Coalition. My first question is from Mr. Otto.
Otto.
Now, as far as you choosing the paired sales analysis, that was your choice, no one forced you to use that technique, is that correct? I mean, the town didn't require you to use the paired sales technique, did they?
There were two questions in there, so I'll answer both. It was my choice to use this approach. This is a recognized technique for these types of circumstances, and no, the town did not direct me in any way as to what my approach should be.
Okay. Could you possibly provide us at some point with the distance of each home from quarry activity in feet? Because you didn't provide that in the report.
There is a map in the report which identifies --
It's an aerial picture, it's not scaled.
Yeah, I just want to finish my answer, if you'll give me that courtesy, because everyone here may not have taken the time to read the report. And so, in response to your question, there is a map of each pairing, which shows the location of the property nearest to the quarry and its paired sale, its twin sale, which is more distant from the quarry. And that satellite image actually shows the quarry as well. So when you look at these pictures, it's clear that they are adjoining the quarry property. And certainly, we can provide additional information to the Borough if they choose to request it.
I'm asking that you provide it to the public. We'd like to know what the distance of each home in that paired sales analysis, there's only 12 of them, you should have that information. Could you just put it on a piece of paper and get it out to us? It seems like a very simple request.
Same answer, but my fiduciary responsibility here is to the municipality, and so if they request that, we can provide it.
Well, I think the municipality, right this second, is asking you to provide information to the public. That's some of the information the public would like. I can't see where some of the board and council members wouldn't like it either. To move on.
Well, Mr. Kushner, I will request the distance from the paired sales, and I will get you that information.
I appreciate that, thank you very much. Now, you show two homes in paired sales analysis in Wayne. One of them you have described as distant from quarry, and one you have described as near to quarry. As far as I can measure those homes, one's 500 feet from a quarry, one's 700 feet from a quarry. Do you have any, I mean, is 700 feet distant and 500 feet near to? Do you have any standard that you're applying here? The lady before me asked the same question, you talked about 0.2 miles, but I'd like to know what distance from quarry means, what near to quarry means, and what adjacent to quarry means.
Okay. It sounds like you've just asked the same question as you asked earlier again, which is --
Yeah, except I'd like an answer.
Which is okay. But again, I think what you're asking is what the distance is, so I'll answer you as follows. This particular pairing is perhaps the best pairing in the group in terms of the similarity of the properties. This pairing in Wayne consists of two identical townhouses, which exist within the same townhouse project, and this project is immediately adjacent to a quarry. One of these properties is actually the last unit to the adjacent to the quarry property, and the other unit is located more interior to the townhouse project, and therefore insulated, separated by other townhouse units that intervene between it.
I don't see it that way, but...
We've measured the distance for that property as 0.08 miles for the property which is nearest to the quarry, and 0.17 miles for the property that is a further distance. So double.
Okay. So again, I will ask, define distant from quarry, define near to quarry, and define adjacent to quarry.
I've just given you the distances.
I --
So we don't really need to wrestle --
I can repeat this all night. It's a very simple question. You and your analysis show each home as distant from quarry, near to quarry, or adjacent to quarry. I need definitions of that distance.
Once again, it seems like we're back to your question as to what the distances are, and I can certainly recite those to you now, if you'd like to hear them.
No, I want to know what the term distant from quarry means.
We'd need to discuss that in the context of each individual pairing.
Right, no, we do not.
Well, I'm telling you, we do. So which one would you like to discuss that for?
So in every pair, in every paired sales analysis, in every paired grouping, it's a different meaning?
It's a function of --
That's what you're telling me?
It's a function of distance.
So in every paired grouping, you came up with a new standard?
No, I didn't come up with a new standard.
Apparently you did, or then tell me the standard.
Properties, two properties whereby one is near to a quarry and one is a further distance to a quarry.
I saw one in Bloomingdale, looked like one was half a mile from the quarry, one was a mile from the quarry. Then I look at another group, the two are only 200 feet different in distance. It's a crazy man's analysis. So if that's where you want to stand behind, I'll move on. What is the adjacent zoning for each of the homes used in a paired sales analysis? Can you provide that?
Am I to understand that, what, from what you just said, that, did you say it's a crazy man's analysis?
If you realize how disrespectful that is... Sir, you are disrespecting the public by providing that idiotic analysis and expecting us to swallow it.
Mr. Kushner, back to your questions, please.
I tried to, he brought me back to it. What is the adjacent zoning for each of the homes used in this paired sales analysis?
I can't recite that by memory.
I don't expect you to have it from memory, you should have it on paper, can you provide that?
My work file is hundreds and hundreds and hundreds of pages long, and I wouldn't be able to tell you that from memory.
Well, you did examine the adjacent zoning in each one of these, and when you say a property was adjacent to quarry, you mean adjacent to quarry property, not adjacent, well, whatever that happened to mean in the particular analysis, half a mile, 200 feet.
Adjacent to quarry property, yes.
So every one of the property that you just find is adjacent to quarry, I'll find that the zoning next to that home is quarry zone.
That's not what I said.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
What I'm saying is that by adjacent, it means that it is adjacent to land which is controlled by the quarry.
So the land that you showed, I think there was a paired analysis in Bloomingdale, there was a house on Union Ave. You're telling me that land adjacent to Union Ave is controlled by the quarry?
Well, I'm going to need to look at that pairing, because each one is --
Well, that's what you just said.
-- is controlled differently. Did you say Union Avenue?
Union Ave. Union Ave, in Bloomingdale.
Pairing.
And it shows it's adjacent to quarry.
It says near quarry.
Oh, near quarry, okay. So if you're near a quarry, what does that mean?
In that case, the distance was 0.45 miles.
All right.
So a little less than half of a mile.
But every, every home that showed as adjacent to quarry, the property next to the home was zoned as quarry?
I'm measuring distances here, and...
Oh, so, so you didn't pay any attention to zoning?
I didn't say that.
Mr. Kushner.
I didn't say that.
I will, I will supply you zoning to the paired sales. Can you move on, please?
That's great. Did you visit any of these homes?
I drove by them.
Okay, every one?
Yes.
Okay. Have you produced paired sales studies for other townships, other persons?
Yes.
Are they published, are they available on the Internet that we could review them?
No.
Okay. What home factors were included in the quote-unquote "other features"? Flooring, did you look at heating and cooling systems, did you look at age of the homes? Because I see two homes in Bloomingdale, paired grouping number one, one had three bedrooms, one had four bedrooms. Now, to me, that's a substantial difference, but you didn't bother to mention that in your analysis.
Okay, so is it that part of your...
You did mention remodeled kitchen.
Is it that part of your question? Because you asked a two-part question. Shall we deal with the second part, the pairing in Bloomingdale?
Well, I'd like to know what home factors were included in other features, other than remodeled kitchen?
Any features which would be, would rise to the level of being significant enough to impact the value of a single-family home.
And number of bedrooms, you did not consider that to, to, to affect the value of a home?
So are you, are you referring to paired sales grouping number one?
No, I'm not, just asking a question. Did you consider number of bedrooms to be something that would change the value of a home?
It depends. It would depend on the circumstances.
On the circumstances of what?
What you'll, what you'll notice, since you did point to sale number one, to the first grouping, is that the analyses that I have prepared have been analyzed on the basis of the selling price of the home per square foot of living area. So...
So why did you list remodeled kitchen?
I'm not finished yet.
I'm sorry?
So, in, with the way that the analysis has been structured, I have first looked at the selling price of the individual sales, and I have divided that by the number of square feet in that home, so as to develop an indication of the selling price of that property per square feet of living area. Now, homes that have more bedrooms usually, not always, but usually, will have more square footage. And so, by, with the way that the analysis has been constructed, there is a proportional consideration of the size of the home, because it's being allocated on a per-square-foot basis. And therefore, there would be no need to adjust for the number of bedrooms. That would be something that we refer to in analytics as a double dip, adjusting for the same thing twice.
So you don't think that the number of bedrooms in a house affects the selling price?
It depends.
It depends.
In this, in the, in the case that you're asking me about, in, in this particular circumstance, it's, it's my conclusion that by analyzing it on a per-square-foot basis, that the relevance and effect of bedrooms has already been factored into that.
What about central air conditioning?
I have not made any adjustments for central air conditioning in these two sales, if that's what you're referring to.
No, I'm, I'm asking if central air conditioning is an asset and was something that would affect a home?
Generally speaking, it's a de minimis feature in determining the selling price of a home.
What does that mean?
Has little to, little to minimal effect on value.
Okay. But a remodeled kitchen does?
Remodeled kitchens are big deals because they're quite expensive to construct.
What about a remodeled bathroom?
It would depend on the extent of modernization, whether that was simply updated or totally replaced.
And you determine that by, you determine that by driving by these homes?
It would also be determined by the value point of the home and, and what type of incremental value it can apply. In terms of how did I determine that, a multiple-step process, which began with obtaining physical descriptions of these properties, including remodeling, accessing online photographs that existed at the time that these properties were sold, so that I was able to review, to review, to view what these properties appeared to look like, and then verification of the data as well.
Okay. So a lot of it depended on your opinion?
I'm not sure about a lot. No, I don't think a lot, but certainly there is some subjectivity in this, but primarily it is an objective analysis.
Now, you mentioned in the report, you talk about the 70, 90, and 100-year quarrying limits, requiring extents. Where did you get that information from?
I think I saw it on an exhibit that was provided to me. In fact, I think that exhibit may exist inside of my report.
It does exist inside of your report.
I'm going to take a look. Oh, you said it does?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I seem to recall that.
Where did you get that exhibit?
I don't remember. We were, we obtained hundreds of documents. I'm not sure where that particular one came from.
Would you provide me with that information, where you got that exhibit?
He got it from me.
Yeah, I thought so.
I emailed you 20 emails, the court order, the Tilcon presentation, so...
How did you confirm that it was accurate?
It was not, it was, it was not critical to my analysis. That, that, those quarry limit lines had no part in developing my conclusions.
But you included them.
For reference, yes.
And maybe you could explain something to me. Now, the grading that takes place on that site, I assume this is more than just shoving a little dirt around. You're talking about, you know, a rocky, steep site, major blasting, all kinds of rock they have to remove, is that correct?
We're getting, you're, you're past my area of expertise in terms of exactly what would need to be done. That would be for an engineer to answer specifically. I have based my analysis on engineering reports that I obtained.
Where did you get those reports? Can you tell me?
I don't recall, but I, I'm not sure. I would need to look at that as well. I'm not certain of where they came from, but there were at least three or four, perhaps as many as six, as I recall.
I'd like all six, and I could find out what they are? I mean, you based, you know, you based your report on this expense, $8 million, and I'd like to know where you got the figure from.
Well, in, in the case of what's in my report, I referenced the engineer that provided it to me.
But not the specific report? You don't provide the report? There's no way for me to get the report?
It does tell you who provided it.
See, my, you know, my, my problem is this. I mean, when you go in and remove dirt and blast rock and haul it away in trucks, if you do it on the southeast side of Federal Hill, it's called quarrying. If you do it on the northwest side of Federal Hill, it's called grading and it costs $8 million. Seems to me on the other side of the hill, they're doing the same thing and making money hand over fist doing it. But now, all of a sudden, I'd have to pay $8 million to have it done. You know, I kind of, I'm kind of inclined to believe that Tilcon would do it for free if they could get the materials, but, you know, I can't really ask you that because you're not an engineer.
Excuse me, Ross, but I think the point of the analysis is, is if a private developer had to go in, forget the whole Tilcon thing.
Right.
It was sold, and a private developer had to go in and mine that.
Right. I would stand up and whistle and say, "Tilcon, free stone."
Yeah, well, but Avalon...
That's what they said at the, I was at the old planning board meetings, that was what discussed it. We asked the developer, "How are you going to get that site graded? It's very expensive." "Oh, no, Tilcon will create a temporary oil road and take that material, they'll love to get it."
Again, I, I can't speak to that.
Now, all of a sudden, it's a big $8 million problem.
But I mean, I just know, I just know Avalon Bay spent, you know, a lot of money prepping that site, which is not nearly as, you know, much stone and whatnot.
Right, wasn't adjacent to the Tilcon quarry either.
But it wasn't done for free, is my point, so...
No, probably didn't cost $8 million either.
I think it was five.
I have a couple of questions from Mr. Redding. You stated that Bloomingdale will be deeded 32 acres of land by Tilcon. How did you arrive at that? What was the basis for that claim?
The residential site, it would be 32 to 35 acres. It's my understanding that Tilcon would quarry that and when, or level that site, and after it had removed the materials, it would deed the site to the Borough.
Where, but, what, did you dream that up, or you had a vision? I mean, how, where'd you get that information?
Ross, of course, of course, I met with the consultants about, you know, the...
So you gave them that information?
We would have had a discussion. The, the thought process is, there's a possibility of, of the deed...
No, 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 not a possibility. He put in his report that this will happen. Will it happen, or will it not happen?
Again, we, that's why we're all here, trying to learn the process. We do not know what's going to happen.
Okay, so in exchange for the zoning change, Tilcon is going to donate 32 acres of land worth $10 million to the Borough. That's what you're telling me?
No, I'm not telling you that. The, the issue is to achieve affordable housing, and Tilcon, you know, isn't in the development business. Again, it's a...
He said you'll make a one-time revenue of $10.6 million by deeding land, deeding land to you. So is that going to happen, or it's not going to happen? If it's not going to happen, take it out of your report.
No, I, I think what we're doing here is, we have to give a set of facts, like, like hypothetical facts.
Assumptions.
That's right, to, to make the, you have to, otherwise you're not going to be able to get the financial impact report and the studies.
So you're assuming that Tilcon's going to gift 32 acres of land to the Borough?
No, that's, that's, that is just what, at this point, is the hypothetical model. That's been basically part of the discussions that have gone on publicly, that, you know, these type of things could be the outfall of this type of project, nothing...
But his question analysis is based on that assumption, so it, it's got a little more meat to the bone than you're making it sound.
Well, I don't know about meat to the bone, Ross, but it just, it's part of a hypothetical as opposed to just saying what happens.
Is that even legal?
Yeah.
It's legal for Tilcon to purchase a zoning change?
No, you can, you can ask a hypothetical.
I'm, I'm asking you as the Borough attorney. It's legal for, because, well, the developers would be lined up pretty quick. You know? You want a zoning change, go to Bloomingdale, slap down your cash, and you got it.
More questions?
That's all the questions I have.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing? Yes, sir.
If I may.
Certainly may.
I'm, I'm working on a new knee I got in January, so I'm, my stand-up days are on pause. My name is George Stafford. I live at 16 Kitchell Avenue, for the record, in Wharton, New Jersey. I'm here representing, along with my colleague, Mr. Ruga, the New Jersey Highlands Coalition. You may get the idea that we're more in favor of an open-space outcome on this situation than the average person. And I had a couple of questions that I think I'd like to see the, the council ask. The, I'm kind of surprised by the numbers as far as, you know, we're going to put 70 kids in the school system, and the implication that I got was, we're going to come out with a surplus on that. I think if you presented that to any school board in the state of New Jersey, it'd be considered miraculous. I'd like to see, I'm, I was curious why you didn't have your assessor here, the town, the town assessor.
I'd say, one, one, what's your first question?
Well, I'm, I think, I would ask the, the council to question those, those education figures. The, the way I've seen the presentation is that if you go along with this and, and you build the houses, and you, and you have the 22 units for COA, or the 72 units for COA, excuse me, that everything's pretty much going to be fine, and, and you're probably going to kind of come out a little bit ahead. If you don't, there's going to be a real big problem.
Right.
And you're going to have higher taxes, and I, I'd like to ask a question Mr. Demato asked about, if the property taxes go up, does it reduce the value of the house? I, I think you should check with places like Franklin Lakes and Mountain Lakes and, and Harding Township and places like that. Generally, that number goes the other way, and...
I agree, but when, when you're, when you're comparing it to a 9,000-square-foot home paying the same taxes as a $1,600, $1,600-square-foot home, it's a little skewed, though.
Well, it, it, there's a question there, and, and, and homes are important, but I think both of these gentlemen will tell you that the land and where the land is, is, is where the value is. They're down in Morris Township taking houses that are good-sized around Morris Town, knocking them down and building a house that was three times the size just to put it on that lot.
Right.
My little lot in Wharton comes out to like $208,000 an acre, which is, is, you know, we're an old mining town, and we're in, but we're in Morris County.
Right.
So, so that's, that's a question. It might be devastating to the individual homeowner to get to the point where he can't pay his property taxes. Is it going to reduce the value on the, on the property? I can't see that as possible. I would, let me add a little bit to, to where I'm coming from here. I was a town councilman in Wharton for 10 years, I was on a planning board for 10 years, I was a tax commissioner in Morris County. I had to go to, these gentlemen have, have decades of experience. You know, I had to go to Rutgers and take the thing. Let's not kid each other, tax commissioner is a, how should we say, there's a political appointment, and, but I went, I took the courses, and I was there, and when, in the early 90s, when I was on the tax commission, we heard an awful lot of appeals, and I've heard a lot of stuff like this. I've never heard anybody's taxes go up because they were living next to a quarry, by the way. But, so those are some of the questions that, that, that I think you should be asking. And the presentation came to me, as I said before, and it's something that you should look into. If you go along with the development, positive outcome. If you don't go along with the development, there's all sorts of terrorists in the weeds that are going to get you, the COA thing and, and different things. I would argue, and I think the Highlands Coalition would argue, that the open space would enhance the value of the properties that are here now. I used to be on the radio, you never heard the applause on radio, it was always dead silence.
Do you, let me ask you a question. Do you know the percentage of open space currently in Bloomingdale?
I'm sorry?
Do you know the percentage of, of open space currently in Bloomingdale? Just asking the question.
I, I do not know.
Okay, that's all I need to know.
Yeah, yeah. You know, we, we talk about density. I, I represent the Highlands Coalition to municipalities all over the northern part of the state, and we talk about density, and we talk about ratables, and, and that's how we're going to, one of the big problems in the Highlands is, we've got to get those ratables, we've got to chase those ratables. We're the most densely populated state in the country. We have the very highest property values, the nearest, $196,000 for a raw acre on average in New Jersey. The next highest state is Rhode Island, 163. I mean, we are far and away, we have more people per square inch. Number two is again Rhode Island, and we have 200 more people per square mile than them. Maryland's fifth, and we have twice the number of people per square mile that they do. So this idea that ratables are saviors, and ratables are going to bring your taxes down, doesn't apply. We have the most ratables, we have the highest rates, we have the highest values, and we're still chasing our tail. So I guess you could make a question out of that somewhere.
Sure. What brings your taxes down?
I'm sorry?
What brings your taxes down? We need revenue. Where do you get revenue from?
We, and, and I'm curious, you talked about how we have the highest ratables, Bloomingdale does not.
No, 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 I'm talking about the state of New Jersey as, as average.
I understand, but we need to concentrate on Bloomingdale, and Bloomingdale does not have the highest rate.
Well, what I'm saying is, even, even if you get, you get communities that have huge ratables, you get communities that have large, let me, let me bring something to you. 10 years down the road after they build this apartment, these people are going to be in tax court saying, "We're right next to a quarry, and we've got, we've got problems with the traffic, and we've got problems with dust, and we, we can't get the rents for our property because we're next to a quarry, and the, the ground shakes, and I've, I've had to do repairs on the building, you have to give me depreciation on my property, and I want to pay less taxes."
Are you, are you familiar with Federal Hill?
Um, vaguely.
Do you, do you know how many acres it is in total?
Um, I would have to ask Elliot, I don't know in total.
It's 440.
Yeah.
Do you know how many of that is already an active quarry?
Well, I would assume the vast majority.
Two-thirds of it.
Yeah.
So, anyway.
Yeah. But I'm, I'm just, I'm just asking you to ask those questions.
Sure. No, absolutely. Again, this is why we have a study. The education is real paramount. Um, you know, but also, I'll defer to Rich, who, who is our liaison and previously served on the board. Our enrollment's half of what it was 20 years ago. You know, you could, you know, except for special needs, which absolutely impacts the cost of education, could fit 100 fannies in, in the seats without an impact to education, unless it's all one grade, or all-
You're not going to have to rebuild the building, but it's still going to cost you $20,000 a head.
I, no, I, no, it wouldn't. Absolutely wrong. If I have room for 150 fannies in my schools, adding 70 is not going to increase the cost of education, unless there's special needs, absolutely will. So it doesn't, you just don't multiply that by 20,000. But, again, I'm not going to debate you on that. But just use, you, all, based on the same urban calculations used here-
Yeah.
Avalon Bay predicts 24. There was nine. So you just, you know, you don't know. You know, you don't know. But I'll defer to Councilman-
Well, no, I mean, the mayor spoke, basically, I know we have members of the Board of Education here, my information might be a lot out, a little bit out of date, a little generalized, but, I mean, as the mayor spoke, our enrollment has slowly decreased over the decades, to the point where, I mean, there was serious consideration about closing one of the three schools. So, I mean, if we keep all three schools open, which is currently, you know, you're currently paying all of the maintenance costs and stuff like that for three schools, so if you could fill those schools, it actually decreases the per pupil cost.
Right, right. But, any, do you have any other comments?
No, sir. I just wanted to say that the findings in the report were not counterintuitive to me, based on my Board of Education experience, that unless there are special needs, which of course are highly variable and could drive anybody's budget-
Uh-huh, I understand that, I understand that.
That, you know, up to a certain point, and I don't think 70 reaches that point, you know, that a regular distribution of, of general education kids would decrease the per, per student cost of education at this time.
Anything else?
I'm done, thank you.
Thank you for your time. Yes, please.
How are you?
Carol Jagiello, 91 Wood Place. First of all, I think what the mayor and council, and the League of Municipalities, and everyone needs to do is to challenge the state on the Economic Development Authority, that billions of dollars a year go to a few corporations instead of money coming back into the towns and the schools. So I think that's what all you guys have to get on, but-
Here, here.
Okay, the report I would have liked to see for Mr. Otto would have been the ones with the planned hypothetical conditions. We're kind of aware of the current conditions, and the paired sales, the condo development, and the condo project viability. I would have liked to see in a report with a 24-hour-a-day active quarry, 300 to 150 foot from the homes and the developments. How would that have changed the property values? That's the report and the hypothetical I would like to see, because that is potentially what's proposed here. The homes indicated a modest, you write, the homes indicated a modest increase in the selling price due to the privacy benefits and the absence of neighboring dwellings on the quarry side. So would that conclusion change if the target properties were 300 to 150 feet from an active quarry?
Is that your question?
Mm-hmm.
It's my opinion that the quarry is a non-issue as it relates to the price that the homes will sell for.
Even though the current paired analysis that you used, and you had stated earlier that you knew of no quarry with homes buffers that close of an active quarry?
I, I did not say that.
Okay, I thought that's what you stated-
Certainly not what I said.
Prior, okay, sorry, I misunderstood. So, that is the theoretical that we're going to be dealing with. The other reports are using hypotheticals and theoreticals. This is, the plan is to overlay the entire mere tract affordable housing piece as its own now with quarry. The buffer, I thought, was 300 foot, now I understand it's actually 150 feet. How would that impact, you have no feeling it would impact on not only the home sales, but the likelihood that a development would be created, and they would get the top dollar that you feel, or you based your report upon?
I didn't follow the second part of your question.
You based your report on the fact that-
You said something about top value, I, I just didn't follow that.
Yes, you, you based it on a certain amount, 288 market value units going for a certain amount of money, with an estimated $13,000 per unit in property tax. That's what I read in the report, that you were basing it on 360 total, 288 market units, with each unit projecting $13,000 a year in property tax.
Okay, is that your report that she may be referring to, or?
I'm not sure.
I don't, I don't think you'll find that in my report, in terms of what each unit would produce, in terms of property taxes.
Yeah, I do.
My report-
See it anywhere else.
My report provided an estimate as to what the land value would be worth, under two different circumstances.
In the comparable sales area, you were comparing all the projects?
Land, land sales.
No, the other comparing development to development.
Do you have my report there? Can you direct me to a page?
I don't, I have, I have little bits and pieces of my notes that I wrote.
Okay, so, help me a little bit more to understand what, what you're referring to, because it's not sounding familiar.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
You had an estimate used for 288 market condos using anticipated property tax of $13,000 per unit, using, and looking at your comp at the Grand in Riverdale, the property taxes there are currently under $5,000 per unit for similar-sized units, as I read in your report.
I, I don't think so, I'm sorry. I don't think that's in my report.
Okay.
None of that is familiar.
Okay, I will come back to that, because I have, I have a lot of questions about those numbers. Also, before I ask my next question, the comment about the millennials leaving the area, that's true of all of New Jersey, isn't it? It's not particular to this area in Bloomingdale and Passaic County, that's kind of what I've been reading.
No, that's not correct.
That's not correct.
No, that is, that is particularly occurring in suburban towns that have a shortage of amenitized, modern, luxury apartment housing.
Okay, okay. Last year, you had made a statement, condos making a comeback in Jersey City, that condos had gone down. Jeffrey Otto, president of Otto Valuation, said a better indication of resale prices in some of the state's most desirable markets. Prices are starting to recover in the cities, Hoboken, Jersey City, that the condo market and the housing crisis brought development to a halt, and that for-sale projects became difficult to finance, especially as federal regulators tightened around lending, many developers shelled plans, and also that the condo bust was especially pronounced in New Jersey, because we ended up seeing this product built in many of the wrong places, suburban places specifically, where buyers really prefer to live in single-family houses. But the market is now back to basics, meaning projects are finding success in urban and other vibrant downtown locations, as some at Westfield and Morris Town. In the suburbs, we've really not seen the type of development occurring since the recession, with a very limited exception. The exceptions have occurred, for the most part, in prime locations where income is high, and a developer can capture a price premium. So these are, this was just last year from your blog. So again, I question that, that this development is going to draw the type of people, and I will find it, after I'm done with these comments, I will find in the report where I got your estimated values of what these projects could sell out for, including the taxes.
So I'd like to respond to that.
Yes.
I think that there was a question implied in that, which is that if the comments you read are something that I was speaking to a year ago, how do they apply to this property?
Yes.
I'm thinking that may be the thread. So that's not something that I wrote on a blog, that was something that I, that a, a news outlet of some sort wrote, I'm not really sure who that was, I have a vague recollection of it. And it speaks to the shift in housing demand and new construction demand from a for-sale product to a more rental-oriented product. And both Mr. Redding and I have said here tonight separately, that if this development project were to go forward today, or sometime very soon, it would likely be a luxury, amenitized rental property, and not a for-sale condominium property. What you read there is really a reinforcement of that. What that article is saying is that one of the few places where multifamily condominiums are a viable housing product, condominiums to be sold, is in high-income, more urbanized places. Today, if this project, property were to be developed, it, in all likelihood, would not be a for-sale condominium, for all of the reasons that you read there, and instead would be likely a rental property.
Was, was that reflected in your report, though?
My report looked at both scenarios, because one of the things that is certain about real estate and economics is that the future changes.
Of course.
And so in my report, I considered that it could potentially be either a rental property or a condominium property, because, or, or nothing at all, or land that's not buildable. So I looked at both scenarios. But if it were to happen today, it would likely be a rental property, which is what that article was really speaking to.
Okay. Now, the, going back to the, the sales, and how quarries really have no effect on land value, actually, just last year, you, again, you used the Grand as a comparable sale in your paired sales and your project comparables. The Grand actually has been complaining for years about damage to the property and blasting, dust, they've been complaining for a long, long time, and they are still hundreds of acres away, as are the properties on Union Avenue and Van Dam from active quarries. As you said, .2 miles, 1,000 feet. The concept for this hypothetical that we're having these reports written for is potentially 150 to 300 feet. So at even 1,000 feet, the residents of the Grand have been complaining so much that Riverdale actually, last year, formed a quarry committee to help all the residents in Riverdale that are dealing with quarry issues, with damage to their homes, to the Grand project, which is specifically mentioned several times as far as structural damage and dust. So at this distance, again, I, I have to say that the report I would have liked to see is what would happen to our town 150, 300 feet away. Riverdale did, and their quarry committee did meet with Tilkon, and in the end, they redid license their quarry for another five years, and nothing will be done for the residents. There's going to be no blast mitigation, nothing with the, they had wanted a bigger bond to cover problems with their properties, which pretty much have been proven that it was because of the blasting that they're damaged. So I just wanted to make that comment. Also, in the report, you had mentioned that you were, that you have this in your report, and that you're aware of this conceptual plan by Shure De Palma of the 70, 90, and 110-year boundaries, Tilkon's conceptual plan. And on page 89 of your report, in the addendum, limiting conditions, you note the freshwater protection acts, and the use, talking about restrictions and buffers on freshwater wetlands. And you, I don't know if this is just standard, or this was specifically written in here, this might be just standard part of your form. The identification and delineation of freshwater wetlands on the subject property, if any, has not been brought to our attention, nor did we become aware of any such delineations during our inspection of the subject, nor during our investigations of this report. However, the appraisers were not qualified to, to render a professional opinion as to the present or the extent of the wetlands. And you go on to say that, in identifying any such potential freshwater wetlands, could have significant impact on values, thereby requiring a study revision. So if this is, you're familiar with the property, there's significant wetlands on this property. So if they are, in fact, a limiting condition, or they're not noted, or they're not important in evaluating the property, I'd just like to know why.
You'd like to know why what?
Well, you say that you have, this would, if you knew there was wetlands on this piece of property, it would significantly affect, have significant impact on effect of the value, thereby requiring study revision.
Okay, so, to respond to that, I have prepared a valuation of this site, of the 32-acre portion of the 180-acre tract, based upon a conceptual development of 360 multifamily housing units, of which 288 would be market rate. And it is that 288 number that is driving the valuation that I've put in my report as, in terms of what the worth of this property would be. The disclaimer that you've just read through is, is my statement, that I'm not an environmental engineer, and so I am assuming that the 360 housing units is, in fact, achievable on this site. Now, it's always possible that various environmental constraints on a site could render portions of that site not buildable, and if that were discovered to be true for this site, to the extent that it would impact the ability to construct 360 units, then the valuation I've come up with would change. That number would, in theory, get smaller, in terms of what could be achieved on the site. I can't speak to any of that, because I'm not an expert in that area.
But, but just to clarify, Carol, the 32 acres, that's court-ordered, there, there are no wetlands on that site.
Right, he was giving values-
Right, I just wanted to clarify.
-on the entire piece, though.
Right, no, the valuation, the valuation for the 32 acres, based on site work being done and not being done, wetlands would have no variable on that, because there are no wetlands on there. The valuation of the rest of the land, it's, we already know it's today overvalued, it's clear in the report, that the value is, is 1.8 million, it's a lot less than what it's being based on today.
Right.
You know, so those variables, but the, the wetlands are not an issue on, on Mr. Otto's evaluation, for the 32 acres.
I know, I, I received a copy of these reports in advance, and I had some time today to look at them, but I'm wondering if, since most of the residents, most of the public, and there's a lot of people here tonight, have not seen these reports, and you have copies outside, are you going to be accepting questions?
It'll, well, the report-
The mayor and council.
Let me, the report will be on the website. The report, I took it upon myself to release to the public and to those I knew who were, you know, very concerned. And I knew, by sending it to the Environmental Commission, the Planning Board, and to a few residents who have concerns about this concept, that it would be distributed to, to various people who could speak to it tonight. Under most circumstances, you'd have an evening like tonight, and then the report would be released. So I think, I think it was quite generous of me, the town, releasing it prior. But, to answer your question, it will be posted on the website. Anyone can Oprah and get a copy of it. Anyone can come to any council meeting to, to ask questions after the fact. The professional, the consultants won't be at every meeting, but if a resident has a question, you can ask it at any meeting, you can email me, and I'll obtain the answer if I can't answer it from our professionals.
Okay, okay. All right, that's, I will look for that. Those figures that I saw in the report regarding the-
All right.
The units, and that's-
Thank you, Carol, very much.
Linda Shortman, to West Shore Road. Mr. Redding, I think you've been around a long-
I'm sorry, yes.
You've been around a long time, and you seem to really have, be an expert in your field, and I'm sure you've heard of the Rutgers study, that those of us 30, 40 years ago heard ad nauseam on planning boards about how, when the condos were being built, there would only, wouldn't be children, they were young married, they'd, they'd move out long before there were children, and that never happened. But with this study that you've done, with your information, when you do this kind of study, do you go back and follow up what actually has happened to those developments? I'm curious, because there's been reference to the Avalon Bay. And Avalon Bay is not the Avalon Bay that I heard being presented, as far as what the siding was, as far as, I believe they were, their COA units were reduced down to five from 15. A lot was, when it actually was built, it was changed. And not only that, but recently, our council had to give, I don't know whether it was financial, or we paved a parking lot, because we kind of brush aside that we have-
What can you, what's your, you have a- What's your, you have a specific question regarding these reports from Mr. Redding?
Yes.
Okay.
The report, that's as part of the question, because he also referred to the schoolchildren coming.
Okay.
But we kind of brush off this, oh, well, we have, I've heard you for years say, we have plenty of room, we have plenty of room, except what happened at Avalon Bay is we can get, we can get a student that can cost hundreds of thousands of dollars, which has happened. So we have to expect that at least 20% of our population is going to be a special ed students, and that's probably pretty moderate today. Getting back to my question for you, do you ever go back and look at what actually developed from what you actually reported?
Yes, we do, when we can. And it's fairly common on rental properties, because they're easier to get information than from condominiums, because in condominiums, you have to go to individual owners and get student council, go to the school district, or transportation coordinators. But we've recently followed up on projects that had been approved and opened. There was a study that was done of 19 multifamily complexes in northern New Jersey after the fact, and what it shows is that the Rutgers multipliers came out in a publication called Who Lives in New Jersey Housing, published in 2006. The data on that was as of 2000, so as of today, that information is 10, 12, 15, 16 years old. What has happened is that more recently occupied projects that we've been able to examine are generating fewer schoolchildren than the CUPR standard multipliers would indicate. So I think it's been the experience, it's been the experience in Bloomingdale with Avalon, that the number of schoolchildren projected were less than what were actually achieved.
But does it actually point out the cost of the schoolchildren that do, that do attend?
Well, the cost of the schoolchildren is reflected in the school district budget, and in your comment about special ed, that in the school district budget, when you reduce that to a per student cost, that includes your special ed costs. Now, obviously, if the cost in the town is $15,000, that's the cost of all students, including special ed. It might only be 13,000 if you pulled the special ed out separately, but they're not, they're not priced separately in the school district budget. So when we do our analysis, we take the, we look at the average cost, and the average cost includes proportionate share of special ed students. Now, if you had a subdivision that was all special ed students, obviously, you'd have a huge price shock, but that has never happened in my experience.
So after you've made these presentations, things are built, developed, you go back and you check what actually has happened, does that support the efficacy of your report?
It supports the validity of the estimates, and one of the key estimates in the fiscal report is the estimates of population, and particularly of schoolchildren. And that is, that is the issue, that is a primary issue in many towns, and so that's one of the statistics that we do go back and check periodically.
So your answer is yes?
What?
What actually has developed supports the efficacy of what you had proposed?
No, actually, our estimates tend to be off. They tend to overstate the actual population.
Not just schoolchildren?
Yes.
Your entire report?
Yes.
Okay. My next question is for Mr. Otto. You presented us with two scenarios, one with extensive site work, one without the site work. Frankly, I don't know about other people, but this issue has really dumbfounded me because as far as I was concerned, after many, many years of this COA-COA, I thought that was a separate COA thing that was done, ready to be built, it was court ordered, it was going to be built. I thought that this quarry expansion were two things, two separate things, and I didn't really think they were involved. But I think Mr. Kushner kind of touched on it. In your report, this mega millions of dollars to prepare this site, we have Tilcon, and I understand that the material on this 32 acres is certainly mineable and certainly very valuable. So did you consider studying what if they took this land to make it site-ready, and they mined it and sold everything off, and it was prepared? Was that ever taken into consideration with the costs and your study?
I believe that it was, and in fact, the scenario that you've just described is the basis for the first valuation in my report. So in the first valuation, I've provided an estimate as to what the value of this property would be if, not specific to the current property owner, but if all of the excavation work were completed so that the site would be ready for a developer to come in and begin their project. So that is the entire premise for the valuation of $10.6 million.
But there is a difference between what Avalon Bay did, they had to pay someone to come in and make it site-ready. This would almost be like a mini mining operation where you would make money by selling the material. They, it isn't just hiring somebody to mine.
True, true enough, but I'll just make sort of two follow-on comments to what you said. You're correct, Avalon, first of all, the work that was required on the Avalon Bay site was less than this would be, so we'll start from that.
Certainly was.
But Avalon Bay, and this is public record, and it's in my report, because of those expenses, paid much less for that property because of the cost that they would incur for it to be buildable. And so my estimate, the estimate that you see in my report, is that after the work is completed on this site, which would be more extensive than occurred on the Avalon Bay site, that the value of this property, I believe, was $37,000 per building, per dwelling, per market rate dwelling unit. Let me just make sure I have that right.
That's right.
That's correct, okay. What Avalon Bay actually paid for their property was only $15,000.
I don't think you understand the component of this land next to the quarry that is quarryable, I'll call it quarryable. I don't think that Avalon Bay sold their material. This material is extremely valuable. Someone would buy it. You're not going to pay somebody to take it away.
I think I understand your premise, and I think your premise is that you would like the owner of the property to pay you to take the dirt out, I think is what you're saying. That really has no place in the analysis that I was asked to perform, which is to estimate what the value of this land asset would be to the municipality if the work were completed and then it were to be deeded to the municipality.
But during, when you did that, you had to take into account a cost of making it site-ready.
No, I assume that that cost would have already been incurred, already been spent.
Oh, it would be site-ready, then?
Well, there still would be a significant amount of site work to be done, but the extraordinary site costs of all of that excavation would already have been taken care of it. In other words, a little more than half of the total site work and costs would already be paid for by someone else. And what the town would then have is a site that they could sell to a developer, who, and that developer would only be incurring, incurring usual site costs as part of their development. You still need to, you know, put in your infrastructure, and you need to put in your road network, and bring in sewer, and bring in water, and do your grading and landscape, and they'd still have to do that. But the extraordinary site costs would have already been completed, thus making the land more valuable.
And you're assuming that the town owns this property?
Actually, I didn't assume that at all in my report. What I was, this was my instruction.
I said the town.
My instruction was to estimate what the value of this property would be if all of that work were completed. Now, embedded in, embedded in that is that the land would be sold to someone or be deeded to the township. I mean, that's, that's a possibility.
So where did you come up with the money that could be made selling the property, the material on the property? Did that figure in anywhere?
Not part of my, my analysis at all.
But isn't that valuable material?
That would only increase the value.
I mean, and speaking with someone who owns the property in Riverdale, I was told that that is very valuable material, that someone would be happy to mine.
Linda, that would, that would just increase the value of the land, then. If, to your point, if Mr. Otto's valuation is based on the value of the land, if it was mined out, you're saying if the product on that land is valuable, then the land would be worth more based on what you're, what you're stating?
Depending on who's, who does it. If Tilcon does it, they're, they're in the business.
Right.
To me, it's not.
You would think, you would think.
You thought that Tilcon...
What John said is...
Who owns the property right now? Mier.
Mier.
And who wants to buy it?
Tilcon.
Tilcon. That's why it's not mine, because Tilcon doesn't own it yet.
No, 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 no.
Tilcon has been wanting to mine that?
No, no, no.
If they had a builder that would come in and say, okay, we're going to buy that property, and we're going to give you the value of what we take out.
Would have been done a long time ago.
I don't think, I don't think that's the scenario. We're talking about a mining, a quarrying company. They have everything in place to do it.
They can't come in, mine it, sell it, sell it. They didn't say that.
Right.
Yeah.
That's how they got to approve it.
Any other questions?
I think that's my only question, other than I'm going to make a statement. There isn't one of us sitting here who doesn't have any of the expertise of these two men, who don't know that those houses on Union Ave will lose value when there's a quarry zoned. Period.
Anyone else, please? Yes, sir, well, I'm going to invite this gentleman up, and you can make your statement before...
I just wanted to ask a question, because I think this is brought up twice, and I'm not getting it here, because there's been a comparison to what was done on Avalon Bay and what could be done to the Mier tract 32 acres. Now, what makes the material that was taken out of the Avalon Bay site so much less valuable than what would be taken out of the 32 acres?
People, please don't shout out.
Because it's not like they would track, truck, excuse me, truck the stuff from the 32 acres over the wetlands to the other side of the mountain to the quarry. They would have to take it on Union Ave, wouldn't they?
That was always the plan when Mier was to develop.
Yep, temporary wall road over the federal hill.
Over the wetlands.
No, around the wetlands.
Okay, so, so wait, wait, we can't, we can't get into this cross-talk from the audience, please.
Anyways, anyways, I'm just confused.
But to your point, I think when someone did shout it out, it's probably a fraction of the quantity that can come out of Mier versus Avalon, and I think the Tilcon has been there since the late 1800s because it has granite, which I think has more value than possibly what was there on Avalon.
Do you know that Avalon Bay did benefit from that?
I don't know.
We don't know.
We don't know that. Yes, sir, name and address for the record.
How you doing?
Good.
My name is Paul Vogel, live on 266 Union Ave. Most of yous know me, most of you see me around town, driving around in red chalk.
Sure do.
I'm politicking, I'm talking to people trying to feel my opinions on certain things. I go to Pomp and Lakes, they're up in arms about Tilcon. These people ain't too much up in arms about because they don't really know the impact that's going to come in on them. And then we have our neighbor in town, Wannacue. What did they give them? Access to put a road in there by Burger King and that mountain, and now they want more stone from us over there, that 70-acre plot and change that don't do the blasting and stuff for the 36-acre condos or projects, whatever you want to put up there. And the thing is, what we should do here, you know, we should have a vote. Let these people vote on what they want. You know what I mean? Let them vote. Do they want Tilcon? Who wants Tilcon here?
No.
Hey, 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 we're doing, it's a lot of them. You know what I mean? That's, they don't want it. You want to hear what these people say about you? I'm like, I don't want to hear it. I wouldn't want people to say anything bad about me. I know they wouldn't, because they all know me.
Well, you know, there's...
And they know who I am, I'm a nice guy, I might have long hair, but I had cancer, and I'm going to donate my hair, so I'm not that bad of a guy. But people are talking nasty about Tilcon, they're talking nasty about you, and if I were you, I wouldn't want to be you, because I don't want nobody talking nasty about me.
Well, I think that comes with the territory of being mayor.
What we should do is have a vote with the people in this town, since this is the...
And let me ask you this, if you did that, but let me ask you this, if you did a vote, and let's, let's say, and I know you're all going to make loud grumbles, let's say it passed two to one to do this, would then everyone support it?
No.
Exactly. So, do you have a...
Well, I don't know. I think we should let the town, these people have a vote.
All right, well, I appreciate your comment. Do you have any other questions?
This is our town, they pay taxes, we all pay taxes, I pay taxes, you know? I live here, I was going to buy a house here, good thing I didn't, because I can skedaddle out here, but I'm like this town, I'm here 38 years. You know, I married a girl 38 years, and this guy used to be picked ones, he used to hold it.
I know, right?
And I'm just fighting for the town, and I'm sure these people have got my back.
Okay.
You know?
All right. I mean, listen, I hear you, so thank you.
And you know what? I would like to see things change, about people talking, add names about you and Tilcon. And I'm sure that would change if they got maybe Tilcon out, you know, they kept you here.
Well, I, possibly. Time will tell. Anything else?
So what about the vote? Can we vote or not?
No.
Can we vote? No votes?
No, not this evening, no. Something like that would have to be on a referendum for the entire community to vote on, and I'm not even sure, I'm not even sure you can do zoning by referendum, but the council's well aware of that being an option in getting, getting residents' input. But again, the people in this room are adamantly against any change on expansion of the quarry, okay? And I understand that, please, please be respectful. But, and we understand that. But we represent everyone, so we have to listen to everyone. So if we, if we did go to vote, to your point, and it actually passed, it's not going to change the opinions in this room. So, do you have anything else?
Yeah, there's, you know, how old is federal hill? How old can that possibly be? Since the beginning of time, has it ever been developed before?
Well, there's, 240 acres is an active quarry.
I mean, no, the federal hill from Union Ave to quarry, that...
You mean the Mier tract?
Yeah. How old could that possibly be?
Like you said, since the beginning of time, I imagine.
What do you think that's living up in here? Any kinds of endangered species?
Right, but that, those discussions occurred over 30 years in Bloomingdale in front of our planning board. That's a, that's a separate discussion, and I'm not, I don't mean, I'm not dismissing what you're saying, but it's not a matter of approving housing. That ship has sailed. There's, there's housing court ordered on the hill. So the bear, the deer, and everything, all that, forget that, it's already there.
Not for Tilcon.
Well, I understand that.
Even more, you know, they're like cancer. They just keep on like Pac-Man.
Okay, listen, okay, and you're entitled to your opinion, and I appreciate that.
The dust, the dust that's going to be flowing over, and we're going to be breathing it, all these people, you know, getting older, they're going to be breathing the dust, and then the closer blasting, you know, my shampoo bottle's full up the shelf now.
Right, now, that's not changing.
Sticky things fall off the window.
And that'll happen for the next 60 years.
My wall lines are breaking. I mean, it's like, goes on and on and on.
Okay.
I mean, we got to really think about letting Tilcon, I'm sure Wannacue gave them enough property that we don't have to give them anything.
I don't know what happened there.
I'm going to check into it, I'm going to get back to you.
All right, I see you enough, you can let me know.
And if they gave them more than what they need, we don't have to give them nothing?
Okay.
Is that impossible?
Again, do your, I don't think Wannacue gave them anything, but it's not the time for the discussion.
I go to all meetings.
Listen, tonight, we're here to talk about these proposals. If the, if the town moves forward, there's, there's much more process, so you'll have opportunity to speak to your concerns, but tonight, because we're going on 9 o'clock, and we still have a full agenda to do there about the specific report, so thank you.
Give somebody else a chance.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please?
Can I just, um...
Excuse me, excuse me. You can't just get up and shout out, please. I would ask this young lady to come up, and Carol, I invite you before this young lady speaks, before you, come on up, just before you state your name, Carol. Just Carol Jagiello, again, for the record.
I just wanted to clarify what I was reading, $13,000 tax is your affordability matrix on page 57. I was conflating that with the page 61, the grant at Bloomingdale. So I read this stuff, and after a while, my eyes cross. So you are correct, you did not attribute...
Oh, you're agreeing with me, okay, great, okay.
I'm just clarifying that, that's all.
Thank you. Thank you, Carol. Yes, name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is...
Should be on, is it on?
Sit down.
No, I'm going to move those chairs, everyone's getting too comfy up there.
Hello, my name is Jane. Hello, my name is Jamie Zachariah, and I'm actually here on behalf of the New Jersey Sierra Club.
Okay.
Our address is 145 West Hanover Street in Trenton.
Thank you.
And the Sierra Club, for decades, has been working to preserve Federal Hill, and as you know, I'm sure, with the Highlands Act, and working for conservation and protecting water resources in the Highlands. And we are very much opposed to the idea of expanding the quarry into the area, because we believe it might and will disrupt high-quality streams and possibly risk water supply. We think that quarries themselves, they create tremendous amounts of stormwater runoff, siltation, and stream pollution. The flooding itself can contain oil and other sort of pollutants that come from the quarry. Then there's the air pollution, the noise pollution, and just the general impact on quality of life. And I know the gentleman already touched on species, and he said that's not the place, but we believe that expanding the quarry into this very extremely environmentally sensitive area would just not benefit the community or the environment in the long run, so on the record, I wanted to...
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, please? Yes?
I'm going to see if that microphone's on. 7:30 was a bit optimistic. I ask everyone to please use the standing mic unless, for circumstances, you need a chair. That'll do it.
It's cold in here, isn't it?
He turned off the air conditioner.
Wow.
What happened with the underground?
I know, but it's still got a... Need you to shout, please.
My name is Ellen Gerber. I'm the three East Shore Room, Camp Leighton. And I just wanted to know, what, you know, we have these reports tonight. What is the process? I assume they've been in front of the planning board, these reports. What's the next step?
The reports were requested by the governing body.
Right.
The planning board...
By the administration, yeah.
The planning board members were copied on the report. If the concept was to proceed, the process would be, and I don't know if this is going to happen, it would be up to the governing body, would be the planning board reviewing the master plan, and... No, 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 no. They haven't done a master plan amendment.
Right. Well, they reviewed it, but we've now, they reviewed it once.
Well, no, they adopted a reexamination report.
Okay.
They would have to review and amend the master plan.
But how do these reports play into that?
Well, again, the planning board members were invited here this evening, have all been copied on it, so they would take this information and, you know, help them make their own decision, because ultimately, if it was to proceed, it would be a master plan amendment, and then the governing body would then have to introduce a zoning ordinance, and then it'd go to the planning board for review, and then if they reviewed it and successfully supported it, it would come back to the governing body for adoption of zoning. That's, you're asking me, if it was to proceed, that's what would have to happen.
And it was in front of the planning board, and then it was put on hold?
Well, it was, no, the planning board had actually already amended, already adopted the reexamination report.
Right.
Then, when they were looking at the master plan amendment, they came up with the Highlands issue. The Highlands would have to review the master plan amendment, so, you know, that would have to be submitted to the Highlands for their review, and then an amendment by the planning board, if it was to proceed.
Okay, and in terms of the Highlands, I was told by the Highlands Council that we are, I gather, we've withdrawn from the planning and performance?
No, no.
Or we put it...
We have not done anything. The, in 2008, I believe, the town petitioned to conform with the preservation and planning area. That petition still exists. If we were to move forward, the Highlands would have the ability to review the master plan amendment. They have no jurisdiction to stop anything, but they would have the right to review it. The town could, the town could petition to withdraw our petition to, that was made in 2008, to the Highlands' planning area, and then the Highlands would have no jurisdiction. So, nothing has happened.
I've been told by the Highlands Council that that, that there was, that they were asked not to continue with their review of our application to conform to the, to the regional master, to the Highland master plan.
No, that's not true. There's been no formal, well, I'd like you to tell me after the meeting who told you that, so my attorney can call that individual and straighten out the record, because that is absolutely 100% inaccurate.
We've tried to go, or can't?
Yeah, no, you can, I mean, if you have to.
So...
As of today, we are still, we still have a petition in front of Highlands for, that the borough will someday conform with the planning and preservation area. That was done years ago.
We're in a process. We made an application, and we're in the process.
No, no, no. There was a petition done by past governing bodies that the borough, the borough petitioned that they have the intention of conformance for the planning and preservation area back in 2006, '07, or '08. Don't hold me to that. So, that's it. That's it.
I thought that we were in a process of meeting their requirements to conform.
There's been some action on the preservation area over the years for conformance. There has been no action over the years for planning conformance whatsoever, whatsoever.
There's been...
There's two, there's preservation and planning areas.
Right, no, I know that.
Over the years, the borough has taken some action...
Right.
...to do conformance, not close to completion.
Okay.
Has done no action on planning for, since the Highlands' inception. That's always been the case. Nothing's changed.
The planning area, okay, you don't have to petition for the preservation area, you have to petition for the planning area.
And nothing...
The preservation area we're in, right?
We're in both.
I know that, but we don't have to, we don't have to petition them at all.
Well, you have to petition for conformance and...
In the planning area.
No, in both, you have to do certain things to be in conformance, ordinances...
The planning area is voluntary, the preservation area is not.
Right. I'll give you that. But the borough hasn't conformed, and we don't have a gold seal sticker anywhere that says we're conformed with either.
Okay, so, and what I've learned is that in fulfilling our, the petition in the planning area, we would have, inherent in that are restrictions or reductions in the number of COA units.
No, that the, matter of fact, the planning area, the regional master plan, I believe specifically references Mier and the court order as superseding all those conditions.
Right, because there's more left over, yes. That's, that is true right now.
Right, right.
But if you, the more, if the town, the more it's put in the planning conformance, then we get, that's one of the reasons towns elect to become part of...
Well, if there's, correct.
Conformance, is because they get a reduction in the COA.
If there's COA in your planning area, true, but the, that would be Mier, which is not going to be...
Not just Mier.
Which is not going to be amended, right. Well, there's no, there's no other COA.
Okay, so what I would tell them, the things that we lose if we withdraw from this planned conformance are reduction in COA obligation...
I'd have to have our attorney do that.
And assistance, and I'm not sure if it's both financial, I suspect it is, but assistance in developing a town center, or any center, but for us, we'd say town center.
Well, there is Highlands' money through the process, which the borough has utilized over the years for various components of compliance, and certainly, there's money to review zoning in your regional, in your master, in your planning and preservation area. You know, there's money to show us how Main Street and Union Ave could benefit from ecotourism and all that good stuff, so, you know, that's, but the borough has not done any steps for conformance since, how long's the Highlands been in place?
2004.
2004. So, for 12 years, the borough's taken no action towards conformance.
That's not a good thing in my mind, but, you know, that is what it is.
I'm just telling you what's, where it's been, right.
Okay, all right, that's it.
Thank you. Anyone else, please?
We're in a tax team, is that okay?
State both your names for the record, just don't cross-talk with each other. Each of you speak.
Renee Markata, 72 Morse Lake Road.
Sharon Von Uller, 76 Morse Lakes Road.
Yep, just, you know what? If you pick that up, you can get into that one. I don't know what's wrong.
Hello?
Yeah, those work. Forget that one, I don't know, and I apologize. Sit down.
We can both sit down, right?
More comfortable.
Okay, we wanted to start off by saying that we walked around the Morse Lakes community one day, and we spoke with 54 people about the quarry, and out of those 54 people, we only came across one person who was actually in favor of the quarry, and that's like a larger random sample than these gentlemen had when they were talking about property values. Another point that I wanted to make in reference to property values is that there have been studies going on since the 1970s about the effects of quarries on adjacent properties. This is nothing new. There are university studies, there's a prominent study by Auburn University used, it's a standard by which you can measure the depreciation of the properties that are nearest to the quarry. It's called the height model. Have you heard of it, gentlemen? So, you're familiar with the height model. I know that the town of Halifax, Vermont recently used that model when they were trying to determine what would happen to the values of their properties if they were to allow a quarry next to them. So, I don't understand, did you reference that model at all? Because it's a standard in the industry.
It's not a standard, and in my view, it's totally inappropriate here. Studies like the height model are performed based upon events in other places. Real estate is extremely local, and it is completely inappropriate to borrow any analytical work that is based upon a different geography, a different climate, a different real estate market, a different economy. In order for these types of analyses to be accurate, to be reliable, they need to be locally based, and they need to draw upon actual circumstances, events, within the local or regional area. Just as it would make no sense at all for me to base the value of a home in Bloomingdale on what homes in Malibu are selling for, would make no sense, because it doesn't have any, any relevant context to this particular place, to this part of New Jersey, to what's happening in this local and regional area.
So, you mean to tell me that your study, based upon the sales of, what was it, 12 houses, is more relevant than, it was six houses, is more relevant than a university study done by Auburn University that's been used by town after town after town?
That is absolutely what I'm telling you.
Okay. And by the way, those towns, they, it didn't cost them all that money either. I know that Tilcon paid for it, but anyway, it's a respected study that's being used, currently being used by many towns.
Did you have a question? Well, I just wanted a clarification on that. Okay, this one is working. You said that the study, the height, the height study, or height model?
Yeah, it's a height model for...
Is, was used for comparison, comparing what happens when a quarry is introduced into a town, right?
Right, well, it's used for comparing the values of properties that are close to a quarry, you know, within half a mile, a mile, up to five miles, how much that they could, how much their property values were lowered for tax purposes by their proximity to the quarry. So, it's a scaled model. The closer they are, the lower their property values go.
Okay, so, it would actually have, if it was valid, it would have some...
Based on proximity.
Based on proximity.
Were these towns that there wasn't a quarry, and they were wanting to put a quarry in, or were the existing quarries already?
I think that there was some of both. I can email you the, all the information on it.
You can send it to me, and I'll share it with council. Okay, thank you.
My question, Mr. Otto, are you aware that there's an inaccuracy in your report on page 16?
I'll take a look. I'm not sure.
Okay, so, then I have to question, although minor, how many other inaccuracies are in that report, such as property values not being affected by a quarry expansion, for the record.
So, is there, was there a question in there?
I'm questioning, were you aware about the inaccuracy in your report?
So, please share with me the inaccuracy.
Okay, on page 16, you've lumped together a number of towns that you claim are in Passaic County, which are not. So, we're looking at page 16, top paragraph under Bloomingdale Borough, and you have lumped together Borough, the Borough borders, Pompton Lakes, Ringwood, Riverdale, and West Milford Township in Passaic County, and both Butler and Kenelon in Morris County. I believe Riverdale is in Morris County, although minor.
It is.
But again, we have to consider other inaccuracies, where you find one. Just saying.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else, please? Yes, please. I would ask, as our next speaker comes up, who else here wishes to speak tonight? Just want to get a timeframe, because we've been here three hours, many haven't had a break, but I'd rather not break or rather proceed, because we need to move on, and our guys are here. Okay, so, three people? Okay.
Pat Sandermeyer, 31 Matthews Terrace, Bloomingdale, New Jersey, 07-403. And I'm just making some comments, it's going to be very fast. I really dislike the word hypothetical, because none of us has a hypothetical house in Bloomingdale. We have real homes that are being affected by what's going on right now at the quarry down Hamburg Turnpike, when they're blasting. September 30th, at 11:30 in the morning, we had a god-awful blast that my house shook, and it, it really scared me half to death. Now, I also am making complaint about the fact that Tilcon promised me that, they came to the house and made a big deal, because I had complained about the fact that my walls are cracking, my ceilings are cracking. If you go from Van Dam Avenue, Van Dam Avenue to Union Avenue, if you want to walk up the mountain, but I suggest going up Jeffrey Drive and taking the first right, that's where my house is. I have nothing, I'm not on what everybody's been talking about. I'm up even further away, and anyway, they promised they were going to come and check And anyway, they promised they were going to come and check everything out. They never came into the house. They said they were going to put up Geiger counter readings, have them, you know, and I might see a strange car and so forth and so on. They said that I would be put on a list and be called, apparently there's some magical list that they run, so that you can be put on the list and warned that you are getting, there's going to be a blast at 12 o'clock. So that you, we don't have to be worried that it's not a terrorist, you know, attack or an earthquake. And I know we are on the earthquake fault, you know, Ramapo. And I believe that's all part of what should have been studied. That's it.
Thank you so much. I will follow up with you on your, no response from, the Geiger counter thing is not TILCON, that's a state, that was Mr. Bukowski, the state compliance officer?
I don't know who it was.
I'm just saying, that's, so we got to make sure he comes back out and places the monitor. As far as the list of the phone calls, there is absolutely an active list that will call you with a warning. So I'll follow up.
Who's that?
TILCON.
TILCON has, that's the promise I was made, and I heard from him twice a year ago.
Okay, I promise you, I'll follow up and I will get back to you on those two.
Just saying.
Thank you so much. Who else would like to make comment?
I think they're talking about where the zoning was created. This is the MIR.
June Peralis, 3 Jeffrey Drive. I live about .8 miles from where the little sign is for Federal Hill. So I'm distant from the quarry. This is Riverdale Quarry. I would like to invite each and every one of you into my home to see the ceiling cracking, the nails popping. I fixed it numerous times, I've had it up to here. It's not a benefit. Distance. That's all.
No, I appreciate your comments.
Yes?
Helena Guy, 12 Ty Street. I have been a resident of Bloomingdale for 36 years. I live four houses down from Van Dam Avenue and cross the street to Federal Hill. Apropos of the tax comments that have been made, this is dated February 17th of this year. Property tax appeals put the borough in a hole. This is Riverdale. The Grand at Riverdale saw a $9.6 million reduction in their property values over the last year. I wonder if that could be due to their proximity to the quarry. I suggest that it is. Mr. Otto, you've indicated that the construction of the whatever, townhouses, condos, apartments, luxury is a word you've used, amenities is a word you've used. When you are 150 feet from a quarry, no matter how many luxuries and amenities you have, they're going to be covered in dust, they're going to be filled with cracks. So I suggest that whoever is going to be living there will very shortly be changing their address. I use the word transient, and not in a very negative way, but just as a description of people who rent. So anyone who comes into a community such as that is transient. I've been here 36 years. I have a stake in this town. You see our logo, an American small town. We're not in the business of providing homes for 20-somethings or 30-somethings. That's not what we're here for. We're here to make the people who live here, who pay the taxes and have put you there happy and healthy in the homes that we reside in. That's your job, that's what you have been entrusted to. And that's what I am going to entreat you to continue to do with us in mind, not with the quarry, not with MIR, not with TILCON, not with any kind of financial incentive, but with the quality of life that we deserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else, please?
Linda Huntley, 86, Van Dam. The first question I have is from Mr. Otto. You're saying that the homes border the quarry on Van Dam. Well, no home borders a quarry on Van Dam. All of the homes on Van Dam are bordering a property that is preserved in perpetuity. So how could you compare that to property, you're comparing sales of houses that are next to property that's preserved, compared to other houses in town? They're going to be similar. When it's a quarry, that will be a different story, but right now it's not. Right now it's property that is preserved in perpetuity.
My study and analysis was designed to quantify any reduction in value resulting from proximity to a quarry operation. And so the criteria that I used was distance. How far were homes to the quarry? And how did the selling prices of those homes compare to others that were more distant? So the entire basis for my work is based upon proximity. And my analysis determined that proximity is not a driving force to affect the value or the selling price of those homes.
Okay, well, my contention is that because these homes border property that is preserved as open space, that is why these property values are comparable. But once you make it a quarry, that's going to affect the property values. And you don't think it's going to?
No, I don't. And the reason is that all of the, I did spend quite a bit of time researching what the most common concerns were as it relates to proximity to quarries. And all of those concerns relate to how close a home is located, whether or not it hears, it's subject to noise, or vibration, or dust. Those are, those are the primary drivers of concerns. And those are true. Those all work, those are all reflective of distance to the quarry operation. And so that is what I focused on.
Okay, what about the fact that you've got a mountain? The mountain, where the quarry is now, it's on one side of the mountain. So the dust doesn't come over the mountain. Now you're going to have that, that property's going to be quarried, and they're going to come down to the 70, 100, whatever, how many years. Now, now the quarry is the other side of the mountain. So now we're going to have dust. We don't have it now, but we're going to have it. So shouldn't that affect our property values?
Well, I have considered the distance factor, as I've just described to you.
Just on my dust?
Yes, I've considered the dust as well, because I've, I've considered properties that were as close as 1,000 or 400 feet from a quarry. And so I believe that that is reflected in the work that I've provided.
Well, I have to again question how you can say that, because the property right now, and I personally live on Van Dam Avenue, I abut preserved property. But now if you're going to, if it's going to be rezoned to be a quarry, that's going to affect my property. Because I'm, now I'm, let me finish, don't, you're, I'm making comments. So now you're going to be going closer to my property, so you're going to be cutting down part of the mountain. Since part of the mountain is going to be gone, now the dust is going to come over to my property.
But, but your question to me was, don't you think it will affect me personally? And that wasn't the basis for my work. My work was to look, to determine, was to determine whether proximity to a quarry operation had, had a corresponding effect on the selling prices of those homes. And my analysis tells me that it does not.
Well, I think your analysis is flawed. Okay, also, per the court order that we presently have, where the housing, where the zoning is done on the town, on the property, that was done by the court. The court has stated that this property is suitable. So there's nothing else that has to be done. That's already taken care of. As long as the town does not do anything to disturb that property being zoned as affordable housing, there's nothing else that Karen has to do. Rich, you had seven, said there's going to be, if we have 70 more kids in the school, we have plenty of room for that. What about in the high school? We're going to have to pay for that, right? So that's, that's going to be a cost to the town, if we have 70 more kids going to high school. I just wanted to bring that up.
70? Is she saying all 70 will be in the high school?
So our seats in the school are not going to satisfy that. We're going to have to pay for this, additional, additional students going to the schools.
Yes, but their cost also shouldn't rise, because I don't believe they're at capacity either.
Right.
But it doesn't matter if they're in capacity, we have to pay for them anyway.
Yeah, we do, and that's already taken into account in the numbers. He said 70 students at this rate. The question is more, is there going to be a bump in the rate because of it? Not, not the total, but the per pupil cost. And my, my statement was more that if you have more general education kids in this district, the cost would go down.
So you're just talking about general education?
Well, because I can't specify special education, because special education could cost you $5,000 or $150,000. I can't generalize on that, because it's too wide of a spectrum.
Okay. Mr. Redding, in your report on page 43, you state that the borough will need to find an alternative location for affordable housing. Where in the law does it state that?
You have a obligation, and the obligation that you're satisfying right now is, is the second round. And that obligation needs to be satisfied somewhere in the borough. If it is determined that this site, this site, this location is not capable of producing that housing, another location will have to be satisfied. Because when you go through your next round of compliance...
Could you talk into the mic, because I can't, I really can't hear you too well.
I'm sorry. Is this working?
Yes.
Okay. When you go through your next round of compliance, you're going to have to look at, at the properties that have been zoned for affordable housing, and what you're going to zone to meet your future obligations, and they'll be viewed as to their suitability.
Well, it's already been ruled that the affordable housing on Federal Hill is suitable.
It was at that time, which is a while ago. The plaintiff in that action is no longer pursuing that.
70 years ago. That's really not that long ago, considering what goes on in housing.
But Potley Homes is not proceeding with, with those plans.
But the property is zoned for that housing.
That is correct.
And the town, the town's responsible for holding any builder that comes in here that purchases that property, that's, the property is zoned for that. So if someone purchased it, they're purchasing with that zoning on there, correct?
And you can certainly argue that mediation, but I'm sure there'll be intervenors suggesting that this is not an appropriate place for that use, and that it has not been, it has not been pursued by the original party.
Okay, so then are you saying that this is not, this housing is no longer applicable?
What I'm saying is that the town has an obligation. It has to settle it somewhere. If it doesn't settle on the site, it's going to find, have to find another location. That's a good question, but the, the next call around is going to extend from 2015 to 2025. You've got a 10-year cycle.
Okay, Mr. Otto, in your report, I know there was an original report, I guess that went out in November, that it went to the borough attorney. How many houses did you compare that, in that report?
I don't recall.
Were there more houses that were compared versus just the six in this report?
I don't recall, but my recollection is, to the best of my recollection, I believe that we added an additional pairing in the revised report. And I believe the pairing that was added was one that is local. That's my recollection.
Can I get a copy of the original draft?
You know, I, I think that's, that's considered deliberative.
It's not deliberative anymore, this is a final report.
So.
It's a final report, so it's not deliberative any longer.
That's not what he signed as the final, but...
Excuse me?
It's not what he signed as the final report, and I think it's considered deliberative, so.
Now, if we do not rezone this property, excuse me, and we just leave it as it is, are we going to get any more credits for housing?
I don't know what you mean by credits, for affordable housing? If we don't do anything? I don't know if we'd get more credits, but the problem that we could foresee is, if it's not a realistic opportunity for development, for those, those affordable units, I'm not worried about the market units, those affordable, those 72 units, if we can't realistically develop those units, then as, I agree with Mr. Redding, then we're going to have to find another location. Otherwise, you're going to be right back with, at some point in time, a builder's remedy type of situation where the borough doesn't have the, the local control over this development. This puts, this, so the answer is no, I don't see you getting more credits, but I would see that these credits are really for the prior round. They're for the second round that we're supposed to be keeping up with. And to some of the discussion earlier with respect to the credits, the Highlands, in this particular case, because of the location of this, this property, doesn't really help reduce credits. What did help reduce credits is that the borough hired a planner who tried to get a vacant land adjustment to reduce the number of units. So that was really, that was helpful. So that's something that's, at least under the plan that the borough's putting together, it's obtainable to, to achieve these numbers. But if we fall short, it's not like the credits will go away. I think somewhere else, there's a group that's intervened in every single town, including Bloomingdale, fair share housing that would, you know, that, that seeks for the borough to develop more credits, not less. So we're trying to maintain a fair obligation.
Now, if we do, if we do rezone the property as a quarry, and the quarry does mine the affordable housing property, and then we get this other hypoth, this was all hypothetical, I guess, because everything's hypothetical, nothing's real. So then it'd been hypo...
It's not real till it's approved.
But, and then, but then hypothetically, we're going to get this property from the, that's going to be deeded to the town. Now what if we don't get this hypothetical deeded property? Then what happens?
From a standpoint of affordable housing?
If, if TILCON purchases the property, and they mine the property for the affordable housing, and they sell it?
As long as they sell it to a developer who in turn has to comply and, and with the affordable housing obligation, that would satisfy, you know, the, the affordable housing plan of the borough.
But it doesn't help the town?
Please do not call out.
But it does, it does help the town, because now we have, we've met our quota. We've left the quarry, we've left the property that's preserved in perpetuity, as preserved in perpetuity, correct?
No, because if, if TILCON were to buy that property, they already would have a right to mine more of the land without, you know, in its present state, the present ordinances, and the way the law is.
Their existing boundaries.
Their existing boundaries.
Just their existing boundaries. They would not be able to use any of the property that is currently preserved in perpetuity.
You say preserved, is that, do you mean like by green acres in open space?
No, I mean by the zoning ordinance that the town put in place on that property.
Okay, but that doesn't mean it's, it's necessarily permanently preserved?
It's a, it's a conservation easement on the property.
Well, under, but, but who...
Our zoning. The town's zoning.
It's a condition of construction happening.
Right, but it's not a...
As of today, that's not an easement.
Yeah.
It's all an affordable, MIR is all an affordable housing zone, paying taxes based on that many acres.
No, TILCON's paying taxes, MIR's not paying taxes. Let's, let's get everything out in the open here.
That's their person, that's their deal.
But that's what, but don't say that, don't say MIR's paying taxes, because they're not, TILCON's paying it.
Tax rate, let me rephrase it. The tax rate on MIR is based on 180 acres with the affordable housing on it. Conservation easement is a condition, it's in the resolution of approval, please, that says, upon construction of this development, the 140 acres become conservation. It's, there's no easement on it today.
We have a zoning ordinance that specifically addresses that that's going to be preserved in perpetuity.
I didn't, you're correct, but as of today, it's not open space. As of today, there's no conservation easement.
As of today, there's a conservation easement on the property based upon our zoning. So unless you change the zoning, there's a conservation easement on the property.
Or unless a property owner comes in and makes an application for development and a, a use variance, that we have no control over. They could change that. Just say, I'm not saying that, but they could. Every property owner has a right to make that application.
There could be a whole new application come in on MIR.
But then, but we could turn around and say, this is already, you purchased the property as a housing...
But under a, a use variance, we can't, if, if they have the grounds, whether it be the board or up on appeal, to say, we have the grounds and the basis for a use variance change, then there's nothing we can do.
Well, the use variance, now you're going to be going...
That zoning ordinance would, would be trumped by a use variance.
But then aren't you going against, then we have these DEP requirements, this is all property that really is not buildable, it's, it's got wetlands throughout it, you can't touch it.
Absolutely, absolutely.
So you're not going to be able, they're not going to be able to quarry it unless you rezone it and give them permission to do so. They would have to pick and choose where they're going to quarry.
I don't, I don't, I don't know, I can't, I can't say that definitively. But is it okay if I just make one comment in response to what you said about the study being flawed? And I, I say this to you respectfully, because you spend a lot of time on this issue. I know you're also, you're, you're an accountant, and I, I want to just make a comment as to my observations, as, you know, as the borough attorney, an accountant, and hearing you speak about this issue. What, with respect to the Otto study, when I saw the report, I really felt as though that I was, I was surprised. But I read it, and I also realized that in all the years of defending tax appeals for municipalities, that it's so rare to get a paired study that's, that's done in such a precise way. It just doesn't happen. You hear this about power lines, you hear it about quarries, we, we defend cases where experts don't do that homework. And just my opinion is, is that, you know, I, first of all, I think that the, the actual paired study is actually very good. I, I don't believe it to be flawed. I think it's, it's done extremely, in a very careful way and accurate. But I want to say this, this is just my opinion, that the study is very good from a financial standpoint, it's saying, if you go to sell your home, he believes, and it's what he just said again, and I've been thinking this as I read the report and tonight, that from a financial standpoint, you will not be negatively impacted. Now what I'm hearing is however, that what the study doesn't discuss is that, well, you know, it doesn't talk about all of the inconvenience, all of the interference. That's not what he was asked to do. He was just asked to say, from a financial standpoint, you know, would, would our residents be negatively impacted? To which he says, no. He's not saying, would you be, you know, the, the quality of life issues are different. You know, we hear a lot, and only the residents can say what they really are experiencing. But even one of the sales in the paired sale analysis, unbeknownst to Mr. Otto, you know, on the same street... on the same street with the quarry, I was very involved, you know, during the same time period with the sale of the property, and I went back to that file, and I said to myself, I just want to see how it matches up. And I can remember the property owner came to me before they sold their property, and they said, I'm concerned because of the quarry. And then they got their asking price, because, you know, from a standpoint of the market, I thought, that's very consistent with one of his paired sales. So, I don't think it's flawed.
Was that the house on Van Dam?
No.
No, not in the living room.
No, but I'm saying to, from a standpoint of, you know, from an appraisal standpoint, it's always easy to look at this information and basically, you know, try to shoot holes in it. But I think from a financial standpoint, it's very sound. Did we ask him to go and look at the quality of life issues and what it does to, you know, your present environment? He said no. But I think there's a distinction there, and I think just also generally, because everyone is trying to really, the borough's trying to educate everybody and be educated, I just also feel it's important to say, these two experts are, you know, their integrity and their experience is ones, they have terrific reputations. And I think it's great that the borough can have a meeting like this, and people can come up and challenge certain things. But from, it's very, you know, to me, it's something that you don't ordinarily see even in tax appeal cases, like the mining cases that were cited, because we can only find two mining cases, and in both cases, there weren't paired sales. And that's what we've done there, to give some indication of the, just pure financial. I know there's a lot of other issues that are left, but I just wanted to kind of share that with you.
Well, I'd like to find out...
You said it was flawed, and I don't agree with you that it's flawed.
Well, is the town going to guarantee the people who live within so many feet of the quarry that their property values are not going to go down?
Linda, you were on the council, you can't, you know, you love to make guarantees like that.
But you can't turn around and say that it's not going to affect it. When I had my house appraised, if the quarry, if the property behind me is zoned as a quarry, my property value goes down, just by virtue of being with a quarry right there. But right now, I don't have a quarry. So, that's definitely going to affect my property value.
I...
And to say it's not going to, I mean, I'll find you a bridge and I'll sell it, I'll put it over a little lake in my backyard, and I'll make a million dollars, but it's not going to happen. It's going to affect the property values, and to sit here and say that it's not going to, I mean, someone's blowing smoke somewhere, and it's not working.
Well, I just, I just wanted to tell you from my perspective, you know, how I view...
Anything else?
That's it.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else wanting to speak on this particular issue? Yes, please, so then we're going to wrap it up. Excuse me?
I don't want to be last.
That's why I invited Bloomingdale residents first, should have went first. Had the opportunity.
Lorraine Weinbrock, 45 Highland Road. Mr. Otto, how many apartment complexes did you find in Bloomingdale?
I don't remember that. I particularly studied the Avalon project because the others would not be relevant to this.
Why not?
Older, lack of amenities, not built with the quality that's being constructed today. I did look at some others, but I don't remember.
Which others did you look at that were not up to par?
I don't recall, I don't recall.
I just wonder how you came to decide that Bloomingdale was in need of more apartments? And despite the amenities, I don't know why you felt that we need to supply housing for millennials, I don't know how that's in our interests. John, question?
So, is that a question you'd like me to answer?
I guess that was, well, my question was, how many apartments did you find?
Before he answers that, I just want to say that I believe, Mr. Otto, you had questions about the Waterfall Village as well. He had asked the borough some questions about that, so that was another complex.
Yeah, we looked at, we looked at a number of them, but I'll just give you a big-picture answer to that question. Any place that does not, that is, that does not attract, okay, so it's an inescapable fact of life that we all get older, and as we get older, we eventually leave. Unless, if an area is not able to attract younger generations that take their place, then it will fail. It's inescapable, it's not an opinion, it's factual. Because without younger people moving in, you don't have economic activity, you don't have housing demand, because people who come in and rent then eventually look to buy. And so, the idea that we can just make time stand still and have people age out and not have someone come in to replace them, it's nonsense.
How many people who are renting in Waterloo Village or wherever have now bought homes?
That's not a good comparison.
You just said people who rent then eventually buy.
Yeah, but specifically...
I don't agree, I don't agree with you.
I'm specifically tailoring that to modern, amenitized, luxury-oriented properties, which by the way, have rental rates that are about the same as what it costs to be a property owner. They're $2,000 a month and above. And so, people who move into those, in that millennial cohort that I talked about, three different groups of people to move in, they will eventually become property owners, and they are likely to buy homes in places where they have laid down roots, become comfortable with the beauty of this area, and perhaps decide to have children. That's a natural progression. I can also tell you that your housing stock is significantly undersupplied in terms of this type of modern rental property. I can also tell you that here in Bloomingdale, which is also true for New Jersey, you're not alone in this, that here in Bloomingdale, 68% of your households are childless. No children 18 years of age or younger. This is very common in New Jersey, 68%. So, what this tells us is that we certainly need an alternate, you would benefit by providing an alternate form of housing geared to these households who don't have children.
All right, well, that's, you're looking at it from that point of view. I would look at it from the point of view that renters do not care about their property as much as homeowners. So, your argument goes on one side, but I don't feel that renters are something that Bloomingdale needs more of. John, I have a question for you.
Sure.
If we, if we approve the zoning and the quarry is extended, expanded, how does that affect our ability to join the Highlands' conformance?
We, it doesn't, we can opt in and conform anytime the borough chooses. Yes, we can.
I have been speaking to some Highlands' conformance people, and they seem to indicate that we would be losing a great deal if the quarry went through, because then it would influence our ability.
There's no wait period. If you ever, if you opt out, you can opt back in, at least presently under the law.
Right, but once we have the quarry operating, you say, well, now I did this bad thing, but okay, let's wait a year, and now, okay, take us back.
We already opted in, and we do have the quarry.
You didn't opt in, it's apparently, you said it was in, in limbo.
The borough petitioned to opt in and conform to the planning area, so we have petitioned, we just haven't conformed.
Right, we haven't conformed.
And there's, with an existing quarry. Please, Alan, it's inappropriate, it's inappropriate to stop, please do not, you can come back up if necessary. So, to your question, my attorney's advising me that we can opt in and conform if so choose at a later date. I've answered your question.
Well, yes, but if that, if the expansion of the quarry would affect our conformance, right? Wouldn't it affect our conformance? Wouldn't the Highlands' council say, you have done this terrible environmental thing?
I think at the present moment, they could chime in and give an opinion, we're not bound by it. But if the borough wasn't, I thought you had said if the borough had opted out...
I didn't say they opted out, I said, in the future, if, once the quarry is in effect and operating, how can we, how can we say, well, now take us back? We've done this terrible environmental thing.
We wouldn't even have to leave, technically, you could, it's an advisory opinion by the Highlands.
Anyway, it's, and I have to question, calling to question the validity of the report. No matter what you say about money in escrow, Tilcon is paying for these reports, and it's hard to believe that any thinking person would believe that the report, that if they paid $30,000 for these reports, they want something out of it, and judging from the reports, they got what they wanted.
Again, that is your opinion, it's inappropriate for you to state such. The borough hired the consultants, the consultants are professionals, their reputation speaks for itself, and it is insulting and inappropriate for you to state otherwise. Do you have anything else to say?
I apologize if I was calling...
It's too late, do you have anything, please?
Pardon me?
I don't know, you just apologized, you just insulted the heck out of the consultants, but...
No, not the consultant, not the consultants, the report. It, just the fact that you allowed Tilcon to pay for reports, and how could you believe that they were going to be objective? I think they're very professional, I think they know what they're doing, and I think they probably made reports that looked very professional. But how many people have said, who's paying for this?
Exactly, exactly what people are saying.
Because people wonder.
Because it's paid out of escrow. You would prefer the borough spend $30,000 on reports?
Yes, yes, you know why? Because then maybe the reports...
The money in escrow, there is no conditions assigned to that. Tilcon had no input on the report.
John, there's no conditions assigned to it, come on.
Exactly, you heard me loud and clear.
Why would any company, despite what you said about businesses do it? Businesses do a lot of things that are not necessarily ethical.
Please, I'm going to stop you there when you're talking about ethics.
Well, why would a company pay that much money for a report?
Mr. Attorney, could you help me about as far as the process and how commonplace, what occurred, occurs all the time?
Yeah, it's an expert's report, and the money that's in escrow was, there was no conditions.
Of course not.
That's right, that's right. And I can say, both of these experts, believe me, they're not looking for additional business by the work they do. They're going to call it like they see it, period, whether we agree with it or we don't. And I have to agree with the mayor, that would be insulting, because you said, you don't agree with, you're saying it's the report, but you're really...
I am saying, the validity of the report.
But you're insulting, you're insulting the experts.
And I, as I, I totally apologize, I really should have thought before I said that, I should have thought that, how it might come across. So, I do seriously apologize, but I still question the validity of a report that is paid for by some, by someone.
But that's why we're having this meeting.
Of course, there's, nothing is going to be in writing.
But we're having this meeting, you could get up and ask any questions about any facts in the report, as which has been done, which they're here to stand by. It's not like they're, you know, they're not here, all the facts are in the report, whether we agree with it or you don't.
Right.
Well, people, other people did ask many questions, so there's no point in my repeating them.
Okay. Do I have a motion to close? Oh, yes, please. I asked for a hand raised a moment ago. We're going to wrap it up, this is our last speaker, thank you.
My name is Gail Wojahusky, 55 Red Twixt Trail, my, I guess, comment and question for Mr. Otto. The problem I have with the pairings that you discussed in the homes is that, it seems to me, from the distances that you described, both the homes that are near and the homes that are far in each pairing are both still close enough to the quarry to experience the dust, the noise, the vibration, and the home damage. My question to you is that, did you ever compare homes that are near to the quarry who experience all these things, and compare them to homes that are far enough away, perhaps in another comparable town, that don't experience the dust and the noise and the home damage and the vibrations? Because it doesn't seem to me like it's a fair comparison when both the near and the distant homes are both experiencing, as you call it, the quality of life and also the physical damage to the homes.
So, a two-part answer to your question. First, I'll answer the second part. It would not be appropriate to go so far in distance as across a municipal boundary and head into a different school district, and a different government, and a different tax rate, and a different mix of property uses in that community. Because we know that property values change dramatically sometimes when you go from one town to another. So, it was necessary to stay within the confines of a municipal boundary, and we did search for the farthest pairings that we could find. These towns tend to have relatively compact development patterns, and so this is what was available. I'll also tell you, though, that your premise, the premise of your, of your question is that further distance would change the result. But if further distance would change the result, then closer distance would change it as well. That would mean, what's implied in that logic is that if there would be a greater difference between a half a mile and 10 miles, then there should be a corresponding difference between a half a mile and feet. And we found here that that difference did not exist.
But I think that the reason there was no difference is because both the near and the farther homes are both experiencing the same problems with quality of life issues and the same problems with cracks in the walls. I mean, who wants to buy a home where you're going to have dust settling in your yard, and you're going to constantly have cracks in your walls? So, if you're .2 miles or .3 miles from the quarry, or .5 miles from the quarry, but you're experiencing those same things, I wouldn't expect there to be a real difference in the home prices.
But all of those conditions that you described would be intensified by closer proximity. So, if what you're saying is true, there would be more noise and more dust and more vibration for homes that were progressively closer to the source of all that than homes that are progressively further.
I don't know if it would be significantly different from a home-buying perspective. I mean, if you have cracks in your walls, it doesn't matter if you're .3 or .5 miles from the quarry, you still have cracks in your walls. If you have dust all over your yard, it probably depends a lot on air conditions and wind conditions and things like that. So, I don't think there's really significant difference in the quality of life issues, being the, being the homes are so close together.
So, I'm going to sort of rephrase what your attorney said to you earlier. What I've, what I'm telling you through this report is that if you go to sell your homes, the market will not apply a penalty. That doesn't mean you want to live with it, that's a whole different set of conditions. But what I can tell you conclusively is that if you threw up your hands and decided that you wanted a change in your life and you wanted to sell your house, that the market would not penalize you for the price that it would pay for your home as a result of these conditions. Whether you're pleased about it is another story.
Yeah, I mean, I don't agree with you, but we'll just leave it at that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'll ask for a motion to close public comment.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we will take a five-minute recess and resume with our normal agenda. Thank you. Resume at 9:54. No eating, no meeting, right? That's dancing, at least three pies. Item one. Wait, hold on, I got it, there's non-agenda items first. There are five non-agenda items. Number one, introduction by title, a fire department suction point ordinance, amending suction point rules and language.
That's on there already, John, I believe.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, good. So, on four. Rose Fund, accepting their recommendations, which are pretty much the same as every year. Number three, authorizing our application for the county open space grant, and we will be seeking additional drainage for Walter T. Bergen. The next one is amending the parking ordinance, introduction by title, we now exclude commercial vehicles at residences exceeding 12,000 pounds, we'll be adding school vehicles to that. And the last one is municipal alliance resolution, there's a grant application, we're going to apply for $625,000 over five years to supplement our municipal alliance program. That's a resolution to submit that application. So, those are the items. Rose Fund, county grant, parking ordinance, and alliance resolution. With that said, motion open early, public comment.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Linda Huntley has a question on agenda, I said that's fine, yes.
Yeah, on the bill's list last, two weeks ago, there was something for the gas boy and also for a plow, well, there's two plows, but one of the plows and the gas boy was taken out of the water department. department.
Okay, I'll have to ask finance, I mean, the plow was one for one of the utility vehicles.
But the plow, but the, but the water department doesn't plow.
Yes, they do.
They do.
Well, if they plow, it's, it's part of DPW, so it's DPW expense, not a water department expense.
It should be DPW.
All right, I'll confirm it.
It should be, they just plow.
But they do plow.
But they don't, but they're.
On a water department truck.
I will, I will find out.
Yeah, but the, but the, even if the water department is plowing, they're plowing for the DPW because the water department itself isn't responsible for plowing.
Again, I don't, I will find out and I will email you the answer.
And the gas boy also is not, it's a municipal expense.
You got it. The only thing I can think is the gas boy may have been shared because utility uses it too, for gas, so, but I'll find out.
In Shortman, 2 West Shule Road, I'm here. How many two-family homes have been found through the CCO process?
Illegal two-family homes, zero.
None. Now, as we said, we passed that ordinance, you credited me with voting yes, that was the reason I voted yes, other towns charge $50 or $60, I think we're gouging our people who leave, and we're not doing a good job, I'd like you to check on the job. I know you're satisfied, I'm not.
Okay, thank you.
That's all.
Professional reports, Jane, anything?
Nothing at this time.
Fred.
Uh, nothing, Mayor.
Any council member?
Library, I don't know, I can't remember the date, I'll figure it out, I have a meeting with the nonprofit organization they started to fundraise for the library.
Right.
They're having a dinner dance at the Glumwild Country Club there, Glumwild Lake.
What date?
I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, give me, let's see if you have a flyer, we'll put on Facebook and everything.
There's a meeting on Friday night I have with Ed and him, so.
Okay. Anything else, anyone else? Just, I have one comment, state aid, we received our state aid for the budget, which is the same, 552,149, that hasn't changed. No consent agenda pending, second and final reading, public hearing, updating municipal, certain municipal fees, public notice statement, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, this ordinance is posted in municipal building, published in Herald News, copy available to the public, sent in motion, may be made to be read by.
And who makes that motion? Second, all in favor?
Aye.
And that would be an ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, McCounty, Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 2, Administration, Chapter 5, Animal Control, and Chapter 11, Building and Housing of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale to update certain municipal fees.
Motion, open public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to 4/2016? Do you know a motion to close?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And who moves to adopt?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Roll call, please. Gotta let her catch up, John.
Councilmembers Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Sondemar.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Second and final reading, 6/2016, sending minimum maximum salary range compensation. This is for the addition of our field consultant, public notice statement, please.
Mr. Mayor, this ordinance was posted in municipal building, published in Herald News. Copy available to the public, sent in motion, may be made to be read by title.
And who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that would be an ordinance establishing a minimum and maximum range of salary and compensation for categories and titles of officers, non-contractual employees and contractual employees of Borough of Bloomingdale.
Motion, public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Who makes that, all in favor?
Aye.
Anyone wishing to speak to 6/2016? John, this has to do with the field consultant? Yeah, because we were paying the $24,000, there was not a position in our salary ordinance, so this is second final reading, so that is in our ordinance, you have justification to pay. We're, I'm sorry, what, where are we?
Motion to close.
Motion to close.
So moved.
All right, second. All in favor?
Aye.
And who moves to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Demoto.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson. Yes. Sondemar.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
No. Introduction, it's under pending, but we'll go with it. It's introduction of, what number?
Uh, 7/2016, 2016, 7/2016.
Bond ordinance amending and reinstating entirety, bond ordinance 7/2015. Who makes the motion to introduce by title?
So moved. Second.
Discussion, just so everyone knows. July 2015, we did a bond, utility bond ordinance of 1.5 million, and this encompass Star Lake Road, Ryerson, water lines, laterals, curved sidewalks, leak study last year, GIS mapping for the utility, manholes, hydrants, supplies. What we're doing here is amending that bond ordinance by the amount of 600. Bear with me. Why isn't it right in front of me, Jane? Yeah, I just wanna get the amount we're increasing it by, $636,000, hold on. It's gotta be in there. I had it. We're increasing this bond by $636,000 for the lower portion of REVE Community Development Block Grant. Okay, so we're just keeping the existing bond and amending it because we got a community development block grant, and now this is going to put funding in place for that project. That's just want everyone to know where it is. So all in favor, introducing by title, is, already motioned, all in favor?
Aye.
The second and final reading?
Second and final reading.
Have to be.
Soon as we can. It's April, it can't be March 15th. That's fine, so we'll go April, April 5th. Let's see, April 5th.
At 7:00 PM?
7:00 PM.
This would be a bond ordinance amending and restating in its entirety, bond ordinance number 7/2015, finally adopted by the Borough of Bloomingdale, by the Borough Council of the Borough of Bloomingdale in the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey on April 21st, 2015, to increase the total appropriation therein from $1,531,645 to $2,167,953, to appropriate a community development block grant in the amount of $119,406, and to amend and supplement other provisions therein.
Okay, thank you. Why do you have, we have suction points under pending. I'm not, I'm not ready for that one yet, but I'm on item D, I need a resolution, 2016 3.1, authorizing the rebidding of Star Lake. Who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Just for the record, we awarded the contract to low bidder, the second lowest bidder objected to that award, it went to court, and the bottom line is the judge's order was for us to rebid this project. The second low bidder was $62,500 more, so I'm content with the rulings, actually, we would have had a problem, we wouldn't have enough funding in place if we did have to award to anyone else but the low bidder, so we are rebidding. So there's a motion on the table, roll call, please.
Councilmember Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto. Del Ripa.
Yes. Hey, new business. Do you see what I mean? It's fine, we have the fire. First, I need a motion, resolution 2016 3.2, authorizing sickly for a DPW employee, the matter is not work-related, who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, I need a motion 16 3.3, authorizing our annual contract with coded systems for all our codification services, who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? You want a roll call?
Yes, sure.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sondemar.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Item C, introduction by title, ordinance number?
Eight.
Eight, 2016, amending the flood hazard ordinance, who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second? Any discussion? Just part of our community rating system process, we need to amend components of our flood hazard ordinance, and that's simply what we're doing here, we have to add language regarding two foot of foot, two, new construction substantial improvements, any residential structure shall have the lowest floor, including basement, elevated two feet above the level of base flood elevation is required in the ordinance, has to do with, trying to think of the word, and excuse me for not remembering, flood, freeboard, that's what it is, freeboard language. Again, standard, and and we didn't just have that language in our ordinance, so, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And that would be March 15th?
March 15th, if we could do that one, yes. Do you wanna read it by title? Then I'll let you catch up.
Okay, that would be an ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, the County of Passaic, State of New Jersey, amending Chapter 30, Flood Hazard Protection, Section 30-5, Provisions for Flood Hazard Reduction, Section 30-5.2, Specific Standards of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale.
Thank you. Next, I need a resolution 2016 3.4, authorizing change in our June meeting dates due to the primary, our meeting dates will now be the 14th and 28th.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Need a motion to accept the resignation of Donna Twoson from the Economic Development Committee, who makes that motion?
So moved.
All, discussion of work commitments, I'm sure she'll be back, it's an asset we're gonna lose there, thank her for her service, all in favor?
Aye.
Item F, memo was sent to everybody, Fred, maybe you can just do real brief, just, there was an out-of-state Oprah ruling by the courts.
Yeah, what the court is saying, that if you're an out-of-state resident or a business, you don't have the right under the Open Public Records Act, or even, most cases under the common law, to make an Oprah request and and have that serviced to you. And I, I think it's good, because I think there was a prior decision by perhaps the Government Records Council that thought otherwise, that it'd be available to all citizens. You have to, if you're out of state, you're not provided with that benefit, you don't pay taxes, you're not a resident of the state, and that's not what the legislation was intended for. And what I like in the decision, because it's so rare that the judges really kinda come out on these Oprah cases, the judge said, look, someone could come forward out of state and say, I will pay a fee, a service charge, and the court said, you know what, that doesn't even really cover or take care of the fact that the clerk's office has so many other responsibilities to conduct official business, so that doesn't cut it either. It's a good decision.
Thank you very much. Next, G, I need a motion to introduce ordinance number?
Nine.
That nine to 2006, fire suction points, who makes that motion?
Second.
Discussion, just myself, the fire chief, Glumwild president, and Fred had a discussion about this, minor changes to clarify language, one was the local, just adding language, that the local enforcing agent shall be under the direct supervision of the fire official, who shall be somebody that meets qualifications of the position recommended by the fire chief, and then language as far as specific sites defining the suction points that work for the fire department and the lake, and that's, that's pretty much it, just to put it on the books and make some, some house cleaning, housekeeping. I'm sorry, we have a motion, right?
Yes.
So all in favor?
Aye.
That would be March 15th also.
March 15th, please.
And that would be an ordinance amending Chapter 14, Fire Prevention and Protection, Subsections 14-1.6, Fire Official Subsection A, Appointment, Section 14-2.6, Specifications and Maintenance of Access Road, Adding Subsection K, and 14-2.11, Violations and Penalties, Subsection C, Schedule A, Existing and Recognized Access Roads, Standpipes and Suction Points.
Thank you. Item H, I need a motion for resolution 2016 3 point, I wanna get five, transfer resolution from municipal alliance to municipal alliance, who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? You want a roll call?
Yeah.
Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Costa.
Yes.
Demoto.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Item I, I need a motion for resolution 2016 3.6, ratifying the DPW contract, who makes that motion, please?
Second.
Any discussion? Real quickly, I would just like to thank the committee of John and Rich, especially like to thank Tracy Schnur of our, Fred's office, who was an incredible asset, and I wanna thank DPW. DPW came to the table, understanding, you know, financial constraints, 2% cap issues that the borough faces, and we were amicably able to settle this. Just real basics, four-year contract, current employees will, will, will remain, those with no remaining steps, raise only, there's a few that have few steps, they will finish their steps, new employees, raise only, no steps, no longevity, new hires start at a 2013 salary, 2% every year, longevity is, is the same, except we're removing the 2015 year 7.5% longevity, and no longevity again for new. Double times been removed, except for holidays, and those are the, the gist of it. So again, thank you all involved, Rich and John, real, real great job. So I need a roll call, please.
Councilmembers Demoto.
Yes.
Del Ripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sondemar.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes. Okay, non-agenda items. First is, I need a motion to accept the minutes and recommendations of 2016 Rose Fund Committee, who makes that motion?
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Again, this is Advisory Board, any amendments the Council can suggest as we go forward, but it's pretty much the same, except all the parts about subcontracting, except for portageons, and, pretty much that's it. We're now pushed to DPW task, because we now hired our field consultants, so we have no, no longer subcontracting our, our field work.
So paying for those DPW guys that are gonna be doing that, it's gonna come out of just regular pay?
Again, it's not, our DPW guys weren't doing, our DPW tasks have only increased, all right? Our DPW tasks have increased, okay? So years ago, payroll was taken out of the rows, and that will remain, there's no way to put it back in current operating, but you're not covering all the costs because you're now increasing our DPW cost. So I believe it was 60 or 70,000 of payroll was taken out, I don't, I have the exact number.
Ninety.
Ninety, whatever it was, for all the rec things they touch, it's not just the stuff on this list for baseball fields, football fields, it's cutting all parks, fixing swings, laying mulch, all the stuff. The specific things that were always subcontracted to tri-state, those are now becoming DPW staff. So, in essence, the new fee of 24,000, we paid out of the rows, but we're not gonna increase it. So in essence, there's an offset of 24,000, but the net was a $21,000 saving, so, the end of the year, we should, we should be tapping the Rose Fund less by $21,000. Okay.
Yeah, one, one thing I'm gonna be adding, but I don't have.
Yeah, again, we could do it anytime.
I will bring that forward, because I missed both meetings, my bad, I missed the email that told me. We will absolutely discuss that, yeah.
Okay. The next item is a motion, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Next item is, I need a resolution, 2016, 3.7, authorizing me to, with assistance of our engineer, to submit our 2016 Passaic County Open Space Grant, and I'm asking the council to approve the submission of phase two for our Walter T. Bergen Drainage Project, which last year we received money, and hope to do a phase one this year and apply, get awards and remember for phase two. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Whatever. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Delaripa.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes. I need a motion to introduce by title. Do you have the ordinance number?
Ten, 2016.
Ten, dash, 2016, amending our parking ordinance, and this is simply adding the language, under the prohibition of what can be, again, it currently says, "Commercial vehicles exceeding 12,000 pounds, no more than one." We're adding school vehicles, next to commercial and school vehicles, not exceeding, not to exceed 12,000, et cetera. Who makes that motion?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Full-size school bus, can't be if somebody's driving, what you're saying.
Correct.
A little one can?
Depends on the weight. I don't know the weight of the small school bus.
Who's going to monitor all that and know the weight limits of?
That would be our property maintenance officer. Will be informed. Need a roll call, please?
I have a question.
Yes.
Amending zoning, so that's 10 days.
Let me see.
We should do it related.
Right, so we'll do April, April 5th. Yeah, well, yeah, planning board meets March 7th, 10th? So right, so we could refer it to them for the 10th, they'll have to review, for us to do the 5th. All right, so we. Did you get a roll call?
Not yet.
Did I ask for a motion?
I have Sandemeyer and Costa.
Sandemeyer, Costa, okay.
That's right.
This is introduced by title. Roll call, please.
Councilmembers Hudson.
Yes.
Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Delaripa.
Yes. And I'll read it to record, on ordinance of the Borough of Bloomingdale, in the County of Passaic, and the State of New Jersey, to amend chapter 92 zoning, article five, regulations concerning certain uses, section 9222, parking, loading, and automotive services of the Code of the Borough of Bloomingdale. And the final non-agenda was a motion for resolution number?
Eight?
3.8, which is to authorize an application that myself and our municipal alliance coordinator, Cindy Hopper, will be submitting. This came to me by way of Pompton Lakes Administrator. This is a, the United States Substance Abuse and Mental Health Services Administration has grant funding available for its drug-free community support program. The grant is more specifically identified substance abuse and mental health services administration drug-free community support program, grant funding opportunities announcement. Pompton had success in this, they have more funds and they're going for their next round. It's $125,000 per year for five years. It obviously does call for more, a staff member to run that, so if we're approved, we'd be talking about, you know, our current municipal coordinator taking on more responsibilities. There's minimum salaries in the grant, all paid for, zero financial obligation to the borough.
There's no in-kind or anything?
Well, there's in-kind for, I just emailed you all the real details of it, no financial in-kind, in-kind of volunteer hours, in-kind as far as housing, like locations, meetings and things, but zero financial obligation. And, again, it's $125,000 that we will work with our police department in efforts to, if we're awarded, to just supplement our program, which I think it really concentrates on underage drinking, drug use, which obviously you cannot deny being important, and that's why we attempt to apply and hopefully have success. But please look at the email that I sent you, had five attachments, real detailed information about the program, and let me know if you have questions after you do that. So, did I have a motion on that? A motion to approve that?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Councilmember Sandemeyer.
Yes.
Yazdi.
Yes.
Costa.
Yes.
DeMato.
Yes.
Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, I need a motion for late public comment?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone's wishing to speak?
Night, Bill.
Linda Huntley, 86, Van Dam Avenue. This $636,000 going into the utility bond.
Yes.
What is that for?
That is for? It's for revat for water laterals from Knolls to Main Street, curb replacement as a result of water laterals installed, and additional funding needed for Ryerson's Community Development Block Grant, where we're doing a full water line, full sewer line, and lateral replacement there as well. That's what it is for.
And the second one is, this subcontractor that you've hired, that was doing work before, that was all paid for out of the Rose Fund, that's not being paid for out of the Rose Fund anymore?
No, the salary will be paid out of the Rose Fund. We averaged 50,000 a year previously.
It was 80.
No, 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 that's DPW's salary.[1531.12]